Bienvenidos a este tiempo, muchas gracias por venir hoy. Ahora, soy Tessa, soy el presidente de la comunidad de la colonización de la ciudad de Washington, Estados Unidos. Y básicamente, hemos tenido algunos tiempos de reuniones, pero lo que realmente... Lo que es el concepto real de una reunión de tiempo es que la gente se unen y deciden cuándo, dónde, cómo quieren hacerlo. Este no es uno que te dicione, ¿verdad? Si te dicen eso, entonces no es una reunión de tiempo. Bien, entonces algunos de ustedes han estado aquí durante un tiempo, o han oído hablar de esto antes. Hemos establecido esto en e-mails, pero lo que realmente queremos que hagáis es que estéis listos para una reunión de tiempo. Podéis pedir ayuda, os lo establecemos de nuevo, pero tiene que ser en vuestra dirección, o debes ser el que decida, ¿estáis listos para una reunión de tiempo? X, Y, Z, ¿vale? Pero aparte de eso, quiero agradecerles de nuevo por venir, y empezaremos con el mensaje. Así que empezamos con la oración.
Sí. A mi derecha, a mi izquierda, a todos los padres del universo, a todos los padres del universo, a todos los padres de amor, a todos los padres de verdad, de paz, de libertad, de justicia. A todos mis protector, mis guías, mis salvación, por la noche, por el día, los santo profetas, los no profetas, los de la vida, los de la muerte.
Así que, hay un par de cosas que no estoy seguro, que he hecho hoy. Pero desde la última reunión de tiempo, uno de los elementos que... La última fue el slide musical. Pero básicamente, una cuestión era la apertura del departamento de la ley. El departamento de la ley fue creado para asistir a las personas con problemas que tenían concernientes al sistema legal. Y estamos abiertos a asistir a las personas, pero no vendemos papel adhesivo, no hacemos servicios legales, importamos servicios legales. En cambio, como abogado o como jefe de gobierno, no hacemos eso, no promovemos eso, no apoyamos eso, no vende papel adhesivo. Y nos ocurrió que algunas de estas prácticas estaban hechas. Solo podremos continuar con el departamento de la ley si las nuevas personas que vienen al departamento de la ley fueran a practicar bajo uno de los actos existentes, uno de los administradores existentes. Y aún no tenemos dinero para hacer eso, así que desde ahora el departamento de la ley está cerrado. Ningún otro departamento o departamento estará abierto a menos que los jefes de ese departamento sean alguien que ya sea administrador o alguien que venga y practique con uno de los administradores y asiste a uno de los departamentos existentes primero para entender cómo hacer las cosas y mantener esa seguridad.
Pero solo para resumir eso, lo que nos damos cuenta es que todavía hay una función real para esta interacción entre nosotros y el colonizador. Así que yo he tomado la iniciativa de empezar a... Estas son algunas de las cosas que nos damos cuenta, pero en breve podrías explicar qué es la función desde tu perspectiva. Para mí, la función del departamento de la ley, como ha estado comunicando Tesla, era para nosotros ofrecer asistencia. Porque realmente esto es sobre nosotros traer a la gente a un cierto nivel, ¿verdad? De competencia. No es sobre nosotros agarrarnos de la mano, es sobre usted llegar a un cierto nivel donde usted sabe dónde está en esto. Y eso es lo que pensamos que sucedió, fue que debido a ciertos tipos de, como podríamos decir, naturales, tipo trajes humanos, que es como si alguien lo hiciera por usted, y tengo que dejar que alguien lo haga por mí. Creo que ese tipo de actividad terminó siendo pervertida o tipo de cambio. Y entonces lo que sucedió fue, "Oh, necesito un certamen para ir a la cárcel", "Bueno, te lo daré si le das alguna financiación". Y entonces lo que nos damos cuenta fue que no era donde estaba esto. Porque al finalmente, una vez que lo haces, entonces te estás haciendo de nuevo, te estás poniendo en la misma situación que estabas en cuando ibas a contratar un abogado que luego termina sorteo escribiendo tus asuntos. Y eso es lo que estamos acerca de, y eso es lo que nos ha pasado como gente. Nuestra base se ha convertido en una especie de criatura, incluso como personas adultas que se convierten en niños en un llamado adulto, que resulta ser alguien que no tiene derecho a ser ese adulto. Y es solo ese adulto, principalmente al principio a través de la fuerza, y ahora a través de la complacencia y la laziosidad, todavía está ahí. Así que lo que me doy cuenta es que todavía hay un lugar, debe todavía haber un lugar para nuestra interacción con el colonizador y el tipo de actividad que entramos en con el colonizador cuando estamos viajando en la carretera, cuando estamos teniendo a nuestros hijos, todo ese tipo de cosas. Todos esos códigos y los llamados cosas legales que hacen. Así que lo que yo tomo en cuenta para mí mismo es empezar, y esto fue algo de lo que hablábamos antes, que era empezar a recopilar los llamados injusticias que se nos han hecho en general como gente. Pero no como gente, como personas negras, sino como gente de la nación, como morens. Y así que para esa actividad tendría que ser hecho, no como persona negra, sino como un moren. Tendrías que estar en tu estatus nacional para que entonces fuera un crimen de derechos humanos si eres una persona negra. No hay leyes para eso, eres un esclavo. Así que lo que yo tomo en cuenta para mí mismo es crear un archivo. Y este archivo va a tener toda la actividad que activos muros han estado involucrados con el colonizador. Y básicamente, archivar todo eso y tenerlo en un computador, en un cuaderno, así como tener copias fotográficas de eso en el templo, que es lo que hace el colonizador por sí mismo. Y estamos empezando a hacer eso por nosotros mismos. Entonces estás refiriendo a los transcripciones y... Sí, pero el problema con los transcripciones, porque he pasado por esto y todos hemos pasado por esto. Así que yo estaba luchando por un llamado boleto de parqueo, el boleto costaba 30 dólares, y decidí ejercitar mis derechos en esto. Así que fui a un F5, el boleto fue, primero que todo, cuando me declaré culpable, costaba 10 dólares. Pero luché, encontraronme culpable de todos modos porque tienen que hacerlo, porque el instante que reconocen que eres nacional y que están equivocados, eso se convierte en caso de ley, y luego todo se desaparece. Así que todavía tienen que hacer las cosas de la copa, pero porque yo estaba solo jugando, o no jugando, sino ejercitándolo a un nivel, porque una de las cosas que superamos es que también queremos asegurarnos de no hacer cosas que nos van a herir. Como realmente, no queremos ejercitarse en cosas que realmente pueden herirnos si no sabemos exactamente lo que hacemos. Así que estaba ejercitando un boleto de parqueo por 30 dólares, el escenario worst case sería 30 dólares. De todos modos, en el proceso, en los primeros momentos intentaban hacerme declarar culpabilidad por 10 dólares. Cuando salí, dije, "No, voy a tener que ir a la cárcel a mediar". Así que luché, encontraronme culpable de todos modos. Y sentí que era necesario tener los transcripciones, así que fui a obtenerlas, los transcripciones costaban 80 dólares. Pero compré muchos, esto es discreto, pero este es el problema para nosotros. Que al final del día, debido a que esto generalmente ocurre con dinero, que muchos de nosotros no vamos a querer tener o tomar el dinero para comprar los transcripciones. Así que me doy cuenta de que ese es un problema. Así que lo que me doy cuenta es, y eso fue una de las cosas de lo que estábamos hablando, intentando hacer es encontrar alguna financiación para tenerlo. Porque los transcripciones terminan siendo la verdadera solidaridad a cualquier cosa. Porque palabra por palabra, mi madre era abogada para el colonizador, y ella dice que básicamente muchas de las veces la forma en que pasan por todo este tipo de cosas simplemente desaparece. En el caso de la cárcel, simplemente, "Lo siento, no podemos encontrarlo", y así es como operan. Así que tener la existencia de un transcribir que es sorteo, asignado por un transcribir, que tiene el nombre del juez, que tiene el nombre del fiscal. Ese es donde entonces empiezas a tener una base para crear lo que llamamos un caso de acción de clase. Porque empiezas a tener evidencia de wide-spread malfez, digamos, por no decirlo con un mejor término. Así que lo que estamos tratando de hacer es recopilar todo este dato, al menos para tenerlo en un cierto lugar, ¿verdad? En el templo. Para que al menos eso esté allí, para que para los morens que tengan problemas ellos puedan venir y revisar la actividad de la gente en ese lugar. Y a través de eso, y a través de la actividad de los antiguos muros que han pasado por eso. Así que entonces puedes tener lo que llamamos un... Tendrías una especie de caso de ley para nosotros como nacionales, para poder entonces alimentarla. ¿Verdad? Porque ahora no estamos mirando al colonizador para nuestro trabajo, ahora no estamos mirando nuestra propia nación para nuestro trabajo. Así que eso es lo que estamos tratando de hacer al principio, es tratar de archivar cosas. Y empecé conmigo mismo, con la copia fotográfica de mis transcripciones, y luego voy a tratar de escanearlas para que luego estén en un disco duro. Y luego lo que esperamos, el plan para hacer es tratar de obtener todo el trabajo de todos, y esto fue parte de donde vinieron los casos de acción de clase. Donde recopilamos la actividad de todos, la actividad que han pasado por con este colonizador, crear eso, y ahí es donde comienza el caso de acción de clase.
Y también, no queremos que la gente se inspire en esto, que eventualmente vamos a tener un caso de acción de clase contra ellos. Porque si nosotros demandamos o demandamos, el objetivo de demandar es obtener el derecho de vuelta. El punto completo de demandar es obtener un derecho que fue arrasado o robado de vuelta. Así que estamos haciendo eso ya con la gente que viene a conocer su nacionalidad y luego reclamando su nacionalidad. Porque al hacer eso, realmente demandas la estatua muerta, la estatua de la guerra. Lo que realmente es, quién es la verdadera amenaza para nosotros es la estatua muerta, no la europea. No es que haya individuos que nos están violando, así que nos vamos a ellos. Es nuestro estatus muerto, lo que les está dando el poder de violarnos de la manera que ellos lo hacen. Así que nosotros corregimos nuestro estatus, eso es realmente el caso. Porque corrigiendo nuestro estatus, ahora tenemos el derecho de vuelta.
Pero también lo que creo que la extensión de eso es el hecho de que incluso cuando declamamos, ellos están negando esa declaración. Hacen todo para mantenerte allí en ese estado, así que creo que ese es el motivo detrás de eso. Porque realmente deberíamos ser capaces de decir, "Hey, soy nacional, tú eres un negro". Pero luego siguen atrapándote a ti a ese estado, a través de la fuerza, a través de la amenaza, de la presión. Así que esas son las cosas que pensamos que realmente es donde realmente esto debe ir, ¿verdad? Y creo que tuve un hermano en la región sur que tenía esto. Y realmente lo que va a pasar al final de esto, es que no va a haber ningún ganado financiero de esto. Lo que va a pasar es que ellos van a decir, "Queremos dejar a estos tipos alone". Y eso es realmente lo que queremos, ¿verdad? Queremos a nuestra gente en las calles de shopping, queremos toda la otra cosa, todo lo que viene de esto, queremos que termine. Eso es realmente lo que queremos, ¿vale?
Antes de continuar con este recapitular, los últimos que no estuvieron aquí. Era realmente, ese fue nuestro comienzo, hemos tenido otras reuniones antes, pero este fue nuestro primer tiempo de reuniones oficiales. Establecimos algunos objetivos para futuras reuniones. Así que una de las cosas que se decidió por la membresía es que debería haber nueve objetivos para que se haga el coro. Así que el coro es el número de miembros que participaron en una reunión para que se llevara lugar. No había tantos en la reunión oficial. Decidimos que podrían haber reuniones on-call si una situación de emergencia requería. Y para hacer eso, algunos contactaron con la organización por sí mismo, y básicamente nos permitimos eso. Y aparte de eso, las reuniones de tiempo regular también se decidieron que serían cada dos meses. Así que como dije, la última fue en mayo 28, así que eso es aproximadamente dos meses atrás. Y lo que también hicimos fue practicar algunos de los regulos que habían sido promocionados y ajustar las mociones en las reuniones. Así que hicimos una marca. Eso fue uno de los puntos principales de la reunión. Aparte de eso, la gente familiarizó con el movimiento y con el templo.
Creo que hubo otra cosa también, que fue parte del trabajo que estaba tratando de hacer, que era tratar de coherir algunas de las leyes. ¿Es eso algo que estabas discutiendo? ¿Estabas tratando de hacer eso? ¿Es eso realmente...? ¿Qué es eso? Así que lo que estamos tratando de hacer también es que entendemos que estamos viviendo bajo algo más, el llamado derecho. Y lo que estamos tratando de hacer, y lo que pensé que sería necesario para nosotros. Y esto fue algo, cuando fui a Japón, fui a Japón y me di cuenta, ya sabes, si alguien está en el viaje a países asiáticos y cosas así, hay un mentalidad completamente diferente allí, y una existencia completamente diferente. Y lo que me doy cuenta es que eso es lo que era la cultura. La cultura era que ibas a algún otro lugar, donde hubiera una cierta forma, podía ser diferente, podía ser cínico, podía ser... Y entonces lo que empecé a pensar fue, ¿cuál es la cultura morena como aquí? Y empecé a pensar que realmente la cultura morena era realmente este, era realmente, en mi opinión... Bueno, en realidad, en mi opinión, no podía identificar lo que la cultura morena realmente significaba aquí. Ese es el trabajo que han hecho para asegurarnos de que realmente no sabemos, realmente la cultura morena, realmente la cultura negra, ahora con la fez, eso es lo que sentí. Así que una de las cosas que sentí que debía ser hecha fue empezar a ver qué trajes... Ya sabes, como dije, fui a Japón, la gente era, todos eran modestos, todos eran batos, todos decían, "Disculpen". Eso no era la ley, pero es una reflexión cultural de manifestación de su ofrenda, que no teníamos aquí. Y cuando miré algunas de esas cosas, empecé a darme cuenta de que eso fue parte de las cosas que también habían hecho. Porque cuando crecí, mi abuela siempre estaba ahí, y así que ella hablaba conmigo, yo recibía un poco de cacha si no hacía algo correcto. "¿Tú tienes que decir buenos días?" Dije, "Sí". Y a su madre, ella no decía, "Sí, ¿quién es sí?" Dije, "Sí, mamá". Había siempre estos tipos de cosas que se nos habían quitado. Y esas cosas son la sorcería que se hace para crear, para hacernos más analistas. No tenemos algo superior, ya sabes, ahora es sobre sorteo de alguien a otro, en lugar de decir, "Disculpen". Así que una de las cosas que pensé que era realmente importante, la he escrito, y esto es hace un año y medio. Fue, voy a ponerlo en el segundo lugar. ¿Cómo se ve la cultura moderna de la cultura morena y actúa y se siente? Mira a los ancianos, a los profetas, a la historia limitada, mira a los mejores ideales dentro de uno mismo. Y me referí a Japón, así que estos fueron, esto fue hace un año y medio. Y dije, ¿cuál es, cuál es un moren? Ya sabes, puedes mirar y puedes ver a una persona japonesa o china, sí, puedes decirlo físicamente. Pero también es la manera y la forma en que actúan, que realmente puedes ver lo que representa su cultura. Y respeto absolutamente, lo que es una de las cosas principales. Así que lo que pensé que era importante, lo que quiero hacer, y estoy tratando de hacer, estoy haciendo esto, es empezar a coherir y organizar lo que creo que son... Así que primero que todo sería la constitución, la base de la ley que se puso en la ley. Y luego empezar a firmar eso, no violar leyes sobre parar en la calle o cruzar por aquí, pero posiblemente, ya sabes, tratar de encontrar ciertos ideales que creo reflejan lo que debería ser la cultura morena o la cultura morena. Y eso entonces podría, eso eventualmente vendría de la gente también. Y así que, y pensé que lo que sería importante era realmente tener eso en una forma original. Para que no fuera un ideal en la mente que se deshaya, que sería duro, rápido. Y no estoy diciendo que eso es duro, rápido significa que no va a cambiar. Solo quería poder tener eso, para que alguien que venga a esto, desde un posible estado muerto, pudiera entender o entender exactamente lo que estábamos buscando que la gente fuera. ¿Vale? Y ayudar a alguien a cruzar la calle, digamos como ejemplo, algunas de estas cosas. Te ayudaría a tu hermano a moverse, te ayudaría a tu hermano, este tipo de cosas. Así que eso es lo que, el otro lado, el archivando nuestro trabajo, pensé que era importante.
Jazan, ¿quieres recitar eso cuando viniste aquí?
¿Para mí? Oh, sí, solo vine aquí en el autobús, mientras estaba bajando el autobús, había un anciano, un anciano negro, tu sabes, hermano, y estaba bajando. Yo ya estaba cruzando, pasando el autobús, yendo por la calle para venir aquí. Mientras lo volteaba, podía ver como que estaba teniendo un problema con su auto, con su pequeño camion y su bolsa, y en el autobús. Así que mientras lo dejaba en el autobús, simplemente aleatoriamente, sin ninguna intención, podía ver que la gente estaba como, "Vamos, ven". Estaban muy impacientes con él, y pensé a mí mismo, ¿por qué no ayudar al tipo a subir el autobús? Es realmente que mucho es un problema de tu tiempo, o de mí mismo. Así que simplemente, sin ningún tráfico, lo volteé, lo cruzé por la calle, lo ayudé a subir, no había problemas. El problema era que el conductor miraba a mí como un asesino, ¿sabes? Sí, sí, no es nada que yo pueda hacer.
Eso lo he escrito, alguien decía, "Ayuda a tu hermano", este tipo de cosas. Esto es lo que estamos tratando de hacer, levantarte de nuevo. Si has notado, si alguien ha pasado tiempo pensando en eso, lo que realmente has dado cuenta es que primero que todo destruyeron a la familia. Y ahora destruyen, y ahora destruyen a la cultura en general. Ya no sabes qué está bien y qué está mal, y así que eso es lo que quiero empezar de nuevo. Y creo que eso, ya sabes, lo que me doy cuenta, es que es una cosa de arriba hacia abajo. No voy a mirar a mis pies para decirle, no voy a mirar a mi cabeza como ejemplo para decirle qué es correcto. Pero también tengo que, ya sabes, alguien dirá, "Oh, si alguien está en tu camino, póngalo de otro lado". Eso podría ser algo cultural, eso podría ser algo que una cultura podría decir es una forma adecuada de ser. Así que, pero eso no es lo que creo que la cultura morena debería ser, exactamente lo que nuestro hermano aquí estaba diciendo, eso es lo que debe representar. Así que eso es lo que siento, el otro lado de eso, y ese tipo de actividad, ¿verdad? Y eso vendría del cuerpo central también, donde posiblemente tengamos una reunión de tiempo donde podamos empezar a construir. ¿Cómo crees que esto debería verse?
Solo quiero mencionar algunos eventos que he tenido. Hemos tenido un par de, un par de partidos, un par de fines de semana. Teníamos clases, teníamos a Pujo y Mari que participaron en el show natural, y tuvimos un taller allí. Así que estamos tratando de implementar más actividades para unir a la comunidad. Durante el Druv, tendríamos un balón cultural, así que usaras tu, cualquier camisa que tengas que representar tu cultura, la cultura morena. Así que eso sería asunto de todos los que vinieran, todos los miembros. Y luego queríamos tratar de implementar futuros balones como ese en una base de Druv también. Y cualquier evento que venga.
Lo único que viene es el Mojuabi, el que realmente va a estar aquí, y va a ser el 3 de enero de 2016. Creo que estamos trabajando con el hermano Setan Ravi, lector, es supuesto que estará aquí. Yo mismo, y estamos trabajando con otro lector, pero todavía estamos esperando a que nos contacten, así que no queremos que no sean recordados de eso. Estamos trabajando con una historia morena para estar aquí también, para hablar. Y como el hermano Tesla lo ha puesto, vamos a hacerlo, estamos empujándolo desde la perspectiva de el balón de vestimenta morena, pero no el balón en cuanto a bailar y demás. Que es para venir de la literatura morena sobre el balón de vestimenta morena. Así que tenemos una perspectiva de lo que significaba durante el Druv. El balón de vestimenta morena, tan enfurecido fue la recepción de los costumbres vestidos por los morenas estadounidenses durante su parada que los miembros del templo de la ciencia morena han decidido tener en diferentes momentos lo que llamarían el balón de vestimenta morana. Esta asamblea se llevará a cabo poco después de las vacaciones, sobre la fiesta de año nuevo. El profeta consentió que esto debía ser para el entretenimiento de los miembros. Otros grupos de personas en la ciudad han estado usando el vestido de nuestros antepasados e iniciando y imitando a ellos, todos los que pueden. Durante la convención morena, más de 1500 costumbres moranas fueron rentadas a los europeos que habían visto el programa y sabían que los morens debían tener un paro de vestimenta. Pero sin embargo, fuimos exitosos en obtener, a través de ciertos comerciantes de vestimenta asiáticos, todos los costumbres que queríamos. Justo como nuestros amigos de la... Gerard, donde tienen su, ya sabes, "indiana" cultura en display para que alguien interactúe con ella. Pero cuando los morens vayan allí, que saben que son morens, ellos pretty much renuncian a la cosa. En cuanto a la cultura, reconocen que no es suya. Y quieren que los morens frecuenten esas estaciones, porque no es solo ellos ganando dinero. No es sobre ellos ganando dinero, es sobre ellos reconocer que son de la orientación oriental. Y están en el oeste ahora mismo, y hay profecías diciendo que la gente de la orientación oriental estaría ayudando a los llamados asiáticos de América del Norte a averiguar quiénes son y regresar a su cultura. Así que no piensen que, ya sabes, cuando decimos nuestra cultura, y luego el Mojuabi está haciendo referencia a eso, ya sabes, estamos teniendo una convención pero no podemos obtener nada de nuestro, porque los europeos han rentado todo, así que no tenemos nuestra cultura. Lo mismo que el hermano Omar dice, tratando de desatarnos de nuestra cultura. Manten en cuenta que los chinos son nuestros hermanos y hermanas. Todo lo que tienen es nuestro, que podemos ir a ellos y obtener cosas si queremos. Los himbos, esa es nuestra cultura, todo lo que tienen podemos ir a ellos y obtener. Los llamados nativos, podemos ir a ellos y tomar cosas de su cultura, incluso en cuanto a nombres. Los nombres himbos son nuestros, nuestros nombres son nuestros. No es algo de la gente pobre que tienen y que no tenemos acceso a o lo que sea. Esta es la cultura mundial que se supone que se ejerce por los fundadores. Pero si los fundadores no están ejercitando su propia cultura, entonces otras personas van a ejercitarlo a su honor. Y no es como, ya sabes, siempre traen la celebración de la Alemania donde reciben la cara negra y se vesten como el paro de morena por la calle. Y, ya sabes, nuestra gente está mirando como, "Oh, están desrespetándonos". No, están claramente demostrando que quieren vernos. Claramente demostrando que hay algo sobre esta cultura, no van a ir a parar en su propia cosa. Van a vestirse como morens, que todos los negros, o lo que sea, van a decirles a los esclavos. Pero cuando vas a Europa, la Alemania, la Suiza, todas estas personas, tienen celebraciones en honor de cuando los morens dominaron donde están ahora. Así que obviamente no están mirando a los morens como a algunos esclavos o algo así. Porque no vestirían como un esclavo. No honrarían al esclavo hasta el punto de que van a cazar su cosa y poner el esclavo y parar con eso. Para probar, ¿sabes lo que quiero decir? Para probar algo. El balón de vestimenta morena será uno de los primeros de aquellos donde se propone una idea que tenga que ver con la origen de millones de personas en este país que pueden trazar sus ancestros hacia los fundadores ilustres de la civilización. Recuerda a los descendientes de estas personas de la época cuando sus antepasados eran las principales personas que difundían las ideas más progresivas de la civilización. De hecho, salvaron la civilización muchas veces. Así que esto no es algo nuevo. Cuando dicen, "Oh, sí, los morens van a civilizar Europa", eso no es, eso es la última vez que hicimos, pero hemos estado haciendo eso. Incluso con nuestra propia gente que entró en la oscuridad, la levantamos. Cuando las tribus barbaras morenas de el norte estaban arrasando todos los países, se les permitía entrar. Fueron los antepasados de los morenas estadounidenses y sus cercanos que salvaron los registros históricos que estaban amenazados durante los días cuando la carga de glas was a fat for despotic soldiers. that saved the historic records that were threatened during the days when the burden of blightiness was a fad for despotic soldiers. This costume ball will be much looked for and appreciated, right? So when, like we spoke about this in one of the classes a little while ago, when Brother Troy took us to, and Brother Talasi took us to the store with the Hindu Stangans, who, you know, they, they were in the store like this is our culture. When the Moors went to the store, it stopped being their stuff because, you know, we were, well, me personally, I was there from outsider perspective. I wasn't there dressed how he was dressed. I would dress like, you know, other, because I was a black guy or whatever like that, you know what I mean? But I was recognizing what was going on in my surroundings. And there was not one individual in that, in that jurisdiction that saw the brothers dressed how they were dressed from a cultural perspective and looking at them as in some way of scorn or looking at them from, you know, oh, why are they wearing our stuff? They're not supposed to wear that or whatever. People had their jaw on the floor when, and we're just talking about two brothers just walking on the street. And people stopping what they're doing to appreciate and looking forward to what, what this is about, what's going on. These are supposed to be so-called black people, but they're not dressed like black people. People in store windows, like looking off their window at these individuals that are supposed to be black guys, but they're not looking like the average black people. There's something different about them. The store that we were in had a vote, had a vote. Four employees. One of their employees waved his hand on the foot on the Moors. Like waved on the Moors, not, oh yeah, well, here's your shirt and I'll be back after going through something or whatever. Waved hands at the foot. We were in the store about an hour, hour and a half. She didn't leave our side. Anybody who was in there, she dealt with them one-on-one, helped them go get stuff, go to the back, bringing them boxes of stuff. So for somebody to try one thing on and took all the boxes back, no complaint, didn't go, whatever, okay, do this one. Why? It was completely acknowledging that they know what's up. They have a brotherly connection, brotherly sisterly connection to us, right? That they're not ashamed of acknowledging that they're not the founders of, of what he's wearing. Having conversations with us, bringing newspaper articles or whatever like that to us just to show us that, you know, you know, even in the news and stuff like that, you know, our store is recognized as, you know, one of the stores for the whole city where if you want to get stuff to look like this, here's where you come. Right? Brothers right there, brother Tony. But that's where he frequently goes to shop. But you don't need to go to, you know, J.C. Penney or wherever, wherever to go get stuff. When you have people who know what our culture is and they're willing to work for us, even except nationality, card, no tax. No questions asked. No, oh, this, I've never seen one like this before. None of that. Oh, you're, oh, you're native, you're indigenous? Oh, no problem. Tax off. No questions asked. No hassles like we get at, you know, you hear people talking about they get hassled with this order of nationality card, they can get taxed off.
Even to add, to take it one step further, we didn't say to them who we were. They, at one point, the gentleman told us who we were. He said, you are diplomats. He told us, you are diplomats here. You're welcome to anything here, anything you need, they told us. And yet at one point, if anybody's having experience with the Hindustans, they're, they're very, you know, segregated culturally. They, they keep to themselves. They don't allow people in. At one point, there was a sister with us who needed to use the washroom. And they took her upstairs. He called the girl from the back and ushered her upstairs into their private washroom. And it was profound to me because if you know these people and how they, how their customs are, they don't do those things. They don't go in their way to help you. They'll sell you something, but that's about it. But that wasn't our experience here. It was profound.
Right? So, so really that's just to bring up, you know, and it's not a thing of taking away from people who aren't able to support or find the finance to have, you know, to dress a certain way. But, you know, we want to empower people that when we have these, when we have these things, these events that are geared towards Moors, according to Gobudjali, anything that you do it for the Moors, it was for, because he wants the Moors to be happy. If you did something for the Moors, it's for the Moors to recognize what's being done for you and to be happy about it. So, you know, regardless of how many times a highwayman tells you, oh, take that hat off and judge that you take that hat off or whatever, you know, that's our culture. We're proud of that. There's, there's no, there should be a empowerment. There should be a sense of empowerment when we dress like ourselves. There should be a sense of realizing that we're, we're, we're taking ourselves back to something or somewhere that we haven't been in about a hundred years. You know what I mean? And again, we use the example, you know, not to take away from people, but if you see a brother walking on the street looking like that opposed to looking like the Irish individual. This is even, even from people of black color people, they're going to look at that different than they look at even a Hindu Stang wearing that same outfit. They're not going to relate, relate, oh yeah, when the Hindu Stang is wearing the, the black guy's, they're going to say, hold on a second, something's different with him. We know that he's supposed to have, wear stuff like that, but you have a brother and all that looks like so-called slave and all that stuff that wearing things like that, it's going to draw attention. It's going to have, it's going to have people, it's going to force people to think. It's going to force them to think. Which is what, which is the, 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 um, the impact of our ancient foremen and forefathers while we have to honor them. Because everyone knows and honors and acknowledges who we are. We're the ones that have the issue, which, you know, brings up another thing that Brother Omar was going to bring up about. You know, the importance of, of the quote-unquote membership, realizing that this is theirs. This is not our Moorish Science Temple and then your, this is your Moorish Science Temple. We work for you. But if you're not looking at this as yours, then this is going to be what it is. If, if the people aren't looking at this as their movement, that way, they have profit, they have principles, they have divine constitution, they have national headwork, they have nationality card, they have individuals whose duty is to work on their behalf, not people on their face like a person. Like we're going to talk, Brother, Brother Norman talked about. That we have to, we have to realize that if we say, Tom, um, this is just for us. This doesn't include any other nobody else. City of Toronto is not going to do this. Province of Ontario is not going to do this. Country of Canada is not going to do this. United States Democracy Act is not going to do this. People in China, Hindustan, whatever, they are not going to do this. This is strictly for Moorish Americans and Canadians. This is your, this is yours. And the more we realize that this is ours, the more responsibility we would take for it to make sure that what happens with it happens.
Just to piggyback off, or camelback off of that, that was another thing on top of this stuff, sort of more activity we're doing. I have also undertaken it to start up a sort of Moorish cultural club or department. Where we start to, you know, like you realize back before I sort of evolved, going out on a Friday night, going to some club. Right? Or some bar or whatever. So now along with the same thing I was telling you about sort of what does our culture look like? I'm also looking to sort of help to start to, uh, to sort of, um, to give energy to us starting to create our own cultural events and doing things like that out with them. So that, you know, on that Friday night, you're not going to, to, as I said, some dance club. You're going to a Moorish cultural event, right? And, and, and to start to create that culture, which is what they had taken from us, right?
And, and even if it's not creating a culture, but Moorish saying, a Moorish saying, new whatever movie came out, we're going to go as Moors. Anybody wants to go? We're going to be at this theater this time. You're going to see this movie. Let's go to the movie out of Moors.
Yeah, that's building, building the community together. Start, because one of the things that the Prophet tells you is that really we should be living together. That's what happens. You go to China, all the Chinese are living together. Not to say that they're all living there, but they've got their areas. And that's where the strength comes from. Because then what happens is they then so-called elect one of their people. And that person then looks after their needs. We don't have that. So those are some of the things that I have started to realize and then brought that in with, sort of conferred with some of the other administrative members about trying to start doing some of that stuff, right? Like I said, we have a barbecue, like Grand Cheek is saying, you know, you go to a movie, you might go to an art gallery. You start coming at it from that perspective.
I have a question for the membership of you guys. This writes what Gobudjali said in his lifetime. What did he say was the way to declare your nationality? How did he say that you were about to do that?
Did he not say?
Um, there's a specific quote that is something that he did to declare your nationality. He said to go to every state in the Union and declare your nationality to each state. Because of the work of Grand Cheek, right? And the Moors who've been around from earlier, from like 2007, 2008. We have physically gone to places like Chicago, New Jersey, um, where else?
Cincinnati.
Cincinnati, um, Sohawaki, Milwaukee, as well as built bridges and built networks with Moors, upstanding Moors, active Moors in places all over, including Germany, um, North Carolina, UK, Switzerland, and many other states, Dallas, um, Chicago, New Jersey, of course, um, what else? California, unnamed. So they are our regions. They speak for us and they put, you know, paperwork in the, right? If the factual is sure, they put paperwork on the record in their jurisdictions that speaks for them and us, okay? And so because of that, you don't have to go and pay thousands of dollars to go to California, to Texas, to New Jersey and say, yeah, I'm a Moor and became a man, so blah, 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 blah. You don't have to do that because these brothers have done that already. And their brothers and sisters out there doing that right now as we speak. Okay, so that's, that's what, that's what Gobudjali said at that time. And because of the internet, the technology, we're able to do a lot of that communicating really easily, right? A lot of communication can be done, but it's what do you, what do you choose to know what I like, you know what I mean? Right? What's, what's really in your heart as far as how you live, you know what I mean? What you, what you put into this, right? Because if it's not really there, then there's no point, there's no point going to California or going to Texas or whatever. If you think that you're going to write something to government in Ontario and your heart's not really in it and they, they come back at you hard, twice as hard, ten times as hard, and you're scratching your head, right? First of all, Ontario is not a state. It's not part of the Union. It's not part of anything visu. Canada is not part of anything visu. Right? Isonomy is the form of government that uses it as a Moorish American, right? And that's a beautiful thing, you know? But it's why to get that, you know, perspective, right? It's not, it's not me telling you anything. It's just a perspective to, to think about, right? To take on.
Yeah, just quickly, um, to, to once again, put on the record the aims and goals of the Moorish Science Temple of America in, in our jurisdiction, which is not owned by us, but we know that the people who have lived in this jurisdiction that have become themselves the authority or government are illegitimate. So there has to be acknowledgement from the people that they recognize the legitimacy of the people who are in the seat of power right now, right? Um, and to inspire that, that transition, we have some aims and goals of the Moorish Science Temple of America. We put this on the first, the first, um, Tawronum and we just want to put these things out there again. Um, one, the proper name must be selected for the Moorish American. Some call it black, African-Canadian, Caribbean-Canadian, West Indian, from the islands, at risk, et cetera. The property of these people is Moorish American because they are descendants of Moroccans born in America. This matter is to be looked at and hopes of correcting. Two, we seek to put an end to all inferior names because possession of these inferior names classifies one as civilly dead for all abuses and mis-treatments that lawful citizens carry to the store party. Three, the objective of our organization is to help in the great program of uplifting fallen manhood, a national organization of the authoritarian complexion. Four, we seek to warn humanity of their sinful ways and inspire them to return to their foremothers and forefathers divine and national principles, that they will endure students of violence and receive their divine rights as citizens according to their free national constitution that was prepared for offering national needs. Five, we seek to keep our people, men, women, and children away from negative scenarios involving peace officers, out of courts in the defendant's capacity, and out of jails and prisons. Six, we seek to continue to facilitate social programs such as prison ministries and transitional programs for young and old to transition out of prison institutions and back into the balance of society peacefully and successfully. Seven, we seek to introduce Moorish Americans in Canada to the morals and principles of their ancient foremen and forefathers. We are teaching their men, they must support their wives and children. Wives must honor their husbands and be the foundation of dog soul. Sons and daughters must obey father and mother and be industrious and become part of uplifting fallen manhood. Eight, we seek to educate humanity with the reality that there is, that there is enough work for all to do to help build a better world. Nine, we seek to rally support from all the wise, faithful, active Moorish Americans, members and lawful citizens to help us in our great work of uplifting fallen manhood. We ask all to help us morally and financially. Ten, the remedy of truth is the cure for religious controversy. We seek to foster the teachings of Yashua, Muhammad, Buddha, Confucius, We seek to foster teachings of Yashua, Muhammad, Buddha, Confucius, Ali, and all the divine prophets. Eleven, we seek to teach our people that though we must be proud of our religion Islamism handed on to us by our ancient foremothers and forefathers, we must never use our doctrines to practice segregation. Twelve, we seek to teach our people that success is earned not given. After the example of our Prophet Muwju Ali, we must live a day and night in public and private for the good of humanity. Thirteen, we seek to teach our people to denounce anything that eludes to the institution of slavery. This includes being late to engagements, appointments, meetings, or occasions. Punctuality is a church of the noble, upright, fearless, and independent more that have love for their people through their guidance of Father Baalab. Fourteen, we seek to teach our people that there is only one sole foundation for the salvation of our people and it comes only through the connection to the moreish divine and national movement of the world, followed by Prophet Muwju Ali. Fifteen, it is earnestly hoped that the moreish divine and national movement of North America, the moreish holy temple of science of the world and the more science temple of America is not to be compared to any back to Africa movement. Sixteen, we seek to remind our people that without understanding, they have fallen from the true light into the utter darkness of sin. And there is not a nation on earth today that will recognize them socially, religiously, politically, or economically, etc. In their present condition of their uncivilized undertaking in which they themselves try to force upon a civilized world. So there is a standard, right? Brother Omar is saying, there's a bar that we want to set so that more's that are coming into this information and coming into international land, earth rights can, um, remove the self-confusion that's been placed on our people coming into this information. Because there has been a lot of work done to keep our people riding the fence with regards to proclaiming their nationality. They're gonna say they're more of all more's, they're gonna say that they got votes of all more's, they're gonna say that there's a history of more's, they recognize that there's these Africans called more's. But when it's time for them to read that, there's a block for, for, for obvious reasons, right? There's a block. And the block comes from people seeing turbid and fezzes and thinking that everybody with a turbid and fez is for the upliftment of our people. When there has been a concerted effort by individuals wearing turbid and fezzes to, to make people look at this from a wrong perspective, to make people think that this is some black guys that now follow Islam and, you know, they just wear fez because they don't wanna wear kufu, or they don't wanna wear, uh, yanca, or they don't wanna wear, you know, they don't wanna wrap their head in a, in, in, you know, cloth or, right? So it's important that, that the people that are coming into this don't be, um, intimidated or offended by the bars that we set. The bars that we set are for the people to elevate themselves to a level of competency. Because to, to have this information just on a shelf, to have this information just as something that, you know, um, you do when there's class and outside of that, you know, being a more doesn't matter or whatever like that, is not a perspective. I mean, this is about people really recognizing for ourself that we have an irresponsibility as a people. And the only way that we can, can be respected in order to take the responsibility is to have national standards and principles. That's the only, that's the only thing that we're lacking, national standards and principles. We already think of us, we, we know people that got finance. We know people that can, can teach. We know people that can, can do multitude of things, but majority of those people who have these skills that we can use to benefit the nation, their status is dead. So their skills are dead. And their skills can't be used for the betterment of the people. The skills are gonna be used for the betterment of some private foreign corporation that these people assume is government or business or whatever, right? So it's, it's, it's not to, you know, put too much on the people, but it's to let the people know the serious nature of what we're engaging, like, like, you know, we've had situations where, you know, more's have given people advice, that they took the advice, applied it, and then it worked. You got the help of your situation without even knowing about, you know, the inner workings of this information. Just taking the information from what somebody told them and say, you know what, I'm just gonna go to court and just see if this works. Ah, it worked. And they get their stuff thrown off. Without having a nationality card, nothing like that. Which goes back to what Brother Taylor says, is that what's your energy with this information? There's more's who, they learn exercising without licenses, without insurance, without whatever, for years with no nationality card or anything. And they don't get stopped. If they do get stopped, they get a ticket. If they get a ticket, they go to court, fight, and they get dismissed. Or they bring it down low, or whatever, whatever the situation is, you know what I mean? But this is bigger than, you know, cards, papers, I say I'm a more, wear fez, or whatever. This is really about changing our aura, changing our energy, changing the frequency that we're vibrating in. Changing our mindset so that when we say that we're more's and we exercise that more, it's not even a question that people are gonna question. Well, is it legit? Or is it, your energy is gonna let them know where you're coming from. Right?
No, just to sort of expand on that, what I think though is that, uh, all that stuff, the court stuff, that's all the baseline stuff. That's stuff that finally clear up. And then really, what he's talking about with the energy is we're gonna be walking, we're gonna be standing up here. So they're gonna know you're a more by your activity. And that's what I was getting back to, the culture and all that other stuff, that it's going to be the way we carry ourselves and the way we move forward, all of the so-called benefits, or at least in keeping the colonizers vague, that to me is just basic stuff that we need to get to, to then finally get to real, to, to get to work, right? It's the nationalization process to begin with. Then, that's just the beginning, that's the foundation part. The rest of it is, is all the other stuff, right?
And, and as well, speaking about, um, also too, um, the, the quote-unquote nationalization process, again. You know, we, we've done things where we say, or, you know, come proclaim international, or you proclaim your nationality, and you know, whatever. We've done things where, you know, we give people cards, and then we give people papers, and then whatever, right? What, if, if you've noticed, um, the past, the past three classes were, were called back to basics, right? The concept of, of doing those classes is to make sure that the people coming into being more's aren't just learning online, I'm just going on websites, cause somebody says, oh yeah, I'm a more, so I'm gonna go to your website. Because, you know, this is not, um, speculation, this is fact. There's more's out there that their job is to get you to look at this from a wrong perspective. That's their job. Their job is to let you think that somebody like, um, the people that, that set up our UMA publication, that they're not the more's that you want to deal with. There's a lot of more's that you should deal with, but don't deal with them because, you know, they talk about civics, and they talk about constitution, and they talk about, you know, systems to wear fezzes, and they talk about these things that, you know, is really part of more's culture, but the people, because they're not groomed with the right information, fall for whatever. So we started the back to basics in order to, to assist more's and get them the right information so that they can be properly, for lack of a better word, trained. So when they go out there, they don't get played by these people who are opportunistic and are only about whether it's, whether it's about money, whether it's about, or fiat, whether it's about, um, like some, some video or whatever, but not about teaching the people. So the, 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 you can proclaim your nationality, declare your nationality at any time, right? We are not owning people's nationality, but we do want people to know that you have an obligation to attend these classes, these classes. Whether you do it online, whether you do it in proper persona. The objective of the classes is to assist you. The, the objective of the classes is so that you're not just sharing this information, coming to this and then say, oh yeah, give me a paper, give me a card, and then go out there and can't use it. It's useless at that point. If, if, if being a more is about this card or this paper, before it's about mindset, the card and paper are gonna be useless to you. So we do the classes, it's, um, over, over a timeframe, right? It is meant to assist people in raising their confidence. Because from experience, we've seen that if you don't know the basics, eventually you're gonna get trapped up. Guaranteed. This is from experience, not just from us, but from other more's that we do. So we, we put everything online so everybody has access to it. Any classes that are, um, captioned back to basics, more's need to pay attention to those because those are the classes that we're gonna be using as quote-unquote your citizenship testing. For when we say, okay, fine, I'm a more, I'm rendered a more, I think I can go out there and be a more, or whatever like that, okay? Then you go through the classes. If we go through the list of classes and your name's in the book once, and you can't qualify that, you've watched them online or whatever, obviously, you haven't gotten the lessons. Cause those lessons are specific to people who are saying that they're tired of being legal, black, colored, African, or whatever like that. They realize that their condition could be better and they want to start doing things to correct their life. Many people, that's not what this is for them. Many people, this is addressing all another school of thought that they belong to. But for some people, this is actual life to them. This is actually taking this and applying it to every single aspect of your life so that your life can be better, right? And again, your nationality is yours to proclaim when you're, when you feel you're competent. When you feel that you're, um, able to wield the sledgehammer and use it. Right? We're not gonna tell you, well, you know, it's been eight months, you shouldn't be using the sledgehammer instead of the little hammer or whatever. Right? You're gonna be the one that says that you're there. And our job is to be there to support you in your evolution. Because again, we work for, for you, right? There's, and, and I bring this up all the time. You know, there's more's outside of Canada that wish they were in Canada. Because where they at, they have nothing with regards to more's. Nothing. All they have is online. There's more's, and we're not talking about just in the Americas, we're talking about in the world. There's more's in different parts of the world, and if they can take a plane to come here and live here, they will do that. Because there's a temple here. That's it. Forget about, you know what I mean, dollar exchange and how much they're gonna pay for whatever. One reason that they'll come here and live here is because there's a temple here that they can say, okay, I could go to here. Proper temple. A proper temple. So there's even more's that, you know, where they, where they are, and there's temples there, they're not even going to those ones. Because when they go there, they realize that, oh, this church, dogma, they're singing hymns in there. How is this more's, how is this more science? How is this what Muwju Ali brought? When people still have, you know, um, um, this, this mentality of um, followership and not be leaders. When the objective is to, to be leader. The objective is to know what you're doing so that when you exercise, it actually has some type of, you know, um, force behind it. It's not just exercising just because it's something to do. It's exercising because when I say, we're gonna send this paper to this organization or company or whatever like that, the response from them is, we got your stuff, I'm very sorry for bothering you. Now I have to do with these people anymore that's been arraying me for the past, you know, two, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, fifteen years under the guise of mortgage payments, under the guise of rent, under the guise of whatever, right? So it's, it is a, a open field for anybody. But we wanna make sure that when, when you're coming into this, that you're getting the correct information. Cause there are people out there that's giving wrong information compared to this. And guaranteed, we know from experience, people who listen to those people, follow those people, they end up in situations that they don't wanna be in. And then when they get whatever it is that they get, instead of them going at those individuals that told them wrong, they're gonna just put all on the more's movement. Right? And then everything falls on the more's, oh, the more's are whatever, well, the more's weren't the one that told you you are wrong, you fool. That was the individual that did that, right? So please don't be offended or be intimidated because we, we say, you know, you shouldn't go to classes that we have. And it's gonna be, you know, it might be nine months of classes that you gotta go to. You know what I mean? But, you know, if anybody in here has a degree, nobody goes complaining to the teacher about, you know what I mean? You gotta get your degree, and you gotta do your twenty years to be a doctor, and nobody mad. You wanna do your twenty years, pay your dues. So it's, it's not an issue. Uh, we don't want it to be an issue. But we're putting it out there so that it's not an issue because we've done this in the past and it wasn't an issue. Oh, why you gotta, why you trying to control? But this is not about controlling, this is about, we're, we're pretty certain information because we know certain people. Right? And we're letting the people know, you know, here's the line. If you're successful in this, walk the line. If you don't wanna walk the line, cool. I mean, we're not, you know, but, but don't get mad when you get off the line and then you realize that you're five million steps off where you're supposed to be. Because we gave the, the template. You know, and we're not given the template to say that we control someone, we rule people or whatever like that. We're given the template so you don't get played. But a lot of people get played out there. Just to, just to, just to bring up, um, if anybody took notice of, um, I, Emperor Seknet, black coward, the black coward girl that just got arrested or whatever because she's making threats about blow up police stations and kill crackers and stuff like that. And then FBI went to her house, FBI went to her house and arrested her. Right? Now, she's just one sister that was probably influenced by some, one of these so-called guru black colored organizations out there pushing this perspective of, you know, we need to, you know, battle this beast and all that back over.
Open season.
Right? Open season on police and whatever like that. Where are these black power guys at that put her on to this info? How come they're not getting arrested and under investigation? Doesn't that clearly mean that they're agents and they work for the other people? If they're not going to get, if two people are going to say, "Kill crackers," and one person is going to get arrested and under investigation, and the other person's still allowed to walk there and say, "Kill crackers," doesn't that clearly mean that somebody is ancient, somebody works with the FBI? And this is the issue that our people are having. Because the so-called Black Power people are never going to talk about this situation in the context that they should. The so-called Black Power people aren't going to talk about, you know, law doesn't matter and law's the white man's stuff and all that, you know, with this situation. They're going to pretend that this thing didn't even exist. They're going to pretend like this didn't even happen. And then say, "Oh yeah, that's just a white man abusing whatever." No, that's Black Power people influencing people to do stupid things. Because they should have learned from the rapper that you just can't say stuff on your mouth and these people not come, come get you. This, this is this year or last year. Rapper talking about he got drugs and he got guns or whatever like that, same thing. FBI said, "Oh, you talking all that stuff, you're going to get twenty years." And he didn't even do nothing. He was just
Talking about it.
Just talking about stuff. He wasn't even guilty of doing anything and they kidnapped him. Why that status? No nationality. Want to, want to make claims that you really shouldn't be making in the status that you have. Because it would be classified as an insurgent. And if you're an insurgent, that means you're going against the government, which is in their corporation. But, you know, and then Black Power guys are not going to talk about that, you know, they're just talking about white men, you know, they're talking about white men, they're talking about black people and all that. That's what happens when you don't know what. When you get people to get you riled up, right? And you're talking about stuff that you shouldn't be talking about. Because you can tell to those people since the sixties, they're talking about kill crackers and all that. And never did it? Do you think FBI is looking at I am threats as, you know what I mean? That's insurgency. That's constitutional violations. Where they're going to step in because they know from the Dred Stop case eighteen hundreds that black people are citizens. So all that crap that they're talking with a black status is mute. Because since the Dred Stop case eighteen hundreds, the European FBI, CIA, CSIS, whoever, all of them know that black people, so-called people who say that they're from Africa and they came over here on slave ships, they are not citizens here. And if you're not a citizen, then you have no rights. And if you have no rights, shut your mouth. If you don't know what your rights are, shut your mouth because these people have guns, jails or whatever, they're not playing. Clearly with I am for a second. Right? So we want people to see how serious this matter is and why Noguadi. Specifically to the Moors, if you don't do anything else, declare your nationality. You do whatever you want. If you don't do anything else, the least that you can do is declare your nationality or declare your language. That's the least that you can do. And if you don't do that, then, you know, whatever, the worst is yet to come. Which, which right now we're witnessing the worst coming. Killing people on the street or whatever, that, they don't know worse than that. Nothing worse than that's coming. If somebody has a badge and a gun could just kill somebody on the street just because they're in a wheelchair, they can't put their hands up because they're crippled, so we're going to shoot that guy. Because he didn't put his hands up, but he's crippled and his hands don't work. You can't do this, but we'll shoot him anyway just because. If that doesn't make people wake up, then, you know, we can't do anything for them. And this is why we're doing what we do for our people here. Because our people here like this, we came up, "Whoa, you got something under the back." We came up in the streets or whatever. We came up with not, not having this information about who I am and getting caught up in doing all types of other stuff out there that we're going to lead to a war, we're going to war. Right? There, you know, even, um, with looking at society, Canada, province of Ontario, city of Toronto, all those people clearly say that they're corporations. And they say out there on the north, state governors and all that stuff coming out, "Yeah, you know, United States corporation." The Pope coming out, "Yeah, you know, United States corporation." And people still think this is government? People still think that they, that they, they have some type of tie to that from a, from a citizen perspective? They want to know why, why they're getting taxed to them, why, you know, everything's going up except the, the value of the currency that, but everything's going up around them, right? The people have totally misrepresented what government is to them. And our job is to fix that. And it starts with the people realizing what's going on. People up here and then people who have fesel on or whatever, they already know what's up. People who are studying, they already know, like Supreme Attorney, they already know what's up. He been kidnapped by them and all that and let go. With no charges. They already know what's up, but do you know what's up? And until you know what's up, then, you know what I mean, just like what I tell you saying, you know, these, these meetings are for you to call. Because this is your government, we are your officials. And we're your officials. You're not our members or whatever. This is your stuff, we're up here for you. We're talking about, um, about us being up here for you. Brother Norman, who is, um, who does the bodywork, you know, fixing cars and all that stuff, having issues with his landlord. Landlord wanted to pick him and all this type of stuff, you know what I mean, shutting off the lights, you know, just, just completely illegal activity, right? What, what did he decide? Did he go cry about it or go yell at them and cuss them on or whatever? No. Call, call who he knew is, you know, competent. Say, you know, this is the situation. More deliberated, talk to the bailiff ourselves on his behalf. Our name's not on no papers. Our name's not on anything, having to do with his business as a mechanic or whatever. Had the bailiff talking to us directly. How come we're talking about this? Oh, we're his council. So we have a right to talk to him, especially when there's people trying to violate him or whatever. What happened? Lights get turned back on? You know what I mean, um, um, bailiff was supposed to call back, you know, to let us know what's going on, or the other stuff, "Oh no, don't worry, you know, he's in good hands" or whatever. I don't need to even call you back or nothing. How, now, now, you got so much people calling him or whatever for his business that he got, fixed tires, right? Because he stood up. He didn't take the passive approach. And a lot of that, you know, you're going to stand up, all right, we'll call for you. You got customers now that you never had before because he stood up. And the higher forces, ancestors started working with him now. That he's going to have to go get employees now because it's too much work even just for him to do. All because for, for one second, he said, "You know what? I'm not even going to deal with these people on the level that they want you to deal with them. I'm going to deal with them dramatically. I'm going to use my, the faculty that God gave me in order to deal with this situation." And now, and he ain't going to be shooting those people anymore. Why? Because he recognized that he's part of a body of people who are competent that anytime you should be able to call them and say, "Yeah, I need some help with something," and then they should be able to assist you. Which, which is what happened. Why it went down like that, right?
Yeah, so, um, if there's any questions, general questions that anybody has, um, uh, more in general, uh, in particular, about the movement, uh, about the temple, just raise your hand and we'll, uh, we'll address them if that's okay.
One question, uh, maybe someone can help me with, um, what is subordinate temple mean? Why is a temple subordinate temple now for?
When, when we, um, got our charter, when we got our charter, um, in two thousand and eight, the concept was that, that we are not supreme authority, right? We are, um, for lack of a better term, subordinate to somebody, but that doesn't take away our power. That was really because of, really that was because of dirty Moors who they knew were watching their activity. So they had to make sure that, you know, when, the thing with dirty Moors is that they're going to use profit stuff against you when you start exercising. So in order to shut dirty Moors down, they said subordinate temple number five. Because the, the structure is grand major temple, Moors Science Temple, and then under Moors Science Temple are subordinate temples. Right? That's just what the standard is. So we just followed the standard so that, you know, when we get challenged, we can say, "Oh yeah, we're subordinate to whoever. If you have an issue with us, go talk to those people." Because, you know, those people are, they don't have no issues. How come there's all these, all these Moors talking negative about Canada and my Moors? But then the Moors who sanction us, they don't have no problems. If anybody should be saying something, it should be the people who put us on, not the people who have nothing to do with us. But because of who was that put us on, the Moors that are considered so-called renegade Moors, the Moors that are considered, "Oh yeah, they don't follow profit" or whatever, or those Moors just do their own thing because Noguadi didn't bring that. Because, because, because that's who we were linked with and not linked with. Those people who prior to them, they tried to connect with us and things just weren't driving. They don't pay for charters and pay for corals and stuff like that. Those things just weren't vibrating with me. When I, when I spoke with individuals about, you know, being Moors Science Temple of America and Canada, because there isn't one here. You know, so it was more just for certain individuals not to be able to say anything to us. Because they already knew that, you know, our frequency was of the ancient foremen and forefathers. The only people since Noguadi's time to even bring up Noguadi from this jurisdiction, where Noguadi came back then to try to set up something here was us. And nobody else ever came here talking about, came to anybody talking about Moors out here, other than us. You know what I mean? So we had targets from the beginning. But we already knew that, that, or they already knew that, you know, we would be looked at with a fine tooth comb from Moors who might not be Moors that you want coming.
Of course.
Right? But yeah.
Thank you.
Any question? What's one?
I didn't hear this Christian period, so. The answer is, I didn't hear this Christian.
Oh.
No, you're saying people are just wondering why we were called subordinate temples?
Subordinate.
Right, so, so secondary or sort of, I mean, to, to answer to someone? What sort of people, so we just explain that to them?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah. Again, like, you know, they, they set it up so that, so that we have free rein. They didn't say subordinate and then, you know, three years later come and try to pull, "Boy, you got a subordinate, so you have to..." No, like, like we had full reign as to how we're going to exercise out here because this is a particular jurisdiction, this jurisdiction quote-unquote "Canada," where, where no Moors ever do. Is a specific situation. This is not a situation like all these other states out there where people want to have a temple. This is different. Because this is actually, um, unplanned or at that, at that time, this was actually unplanned territory. Part of the Moors' empire and no Moors are claimed because no Moors ever been here.
So the movement, the movement was actually undermined when Noguadi came here?
Yeah.
The movement was, has been undermined from the get-go. So, and what you can look at just to expound on that, the Grand Major Temple could be the federal, the subordinates could be the provincial. Uh, what happens in Ontario, which is so-called, there's a lot of differences going on in New York City. Or so. It's just basically regencies and that sort of kind of talk or whatever. But ultimately, it was the prophet who was the Grand Major Temple, right? It was his temple, so you invented hearing what the prophet was doing, because the prophet was the word. And you were supposed to follow him, so that's what that was, that's what that has been based off of.
Anybody else? Anything else?
So the Grand Major Temple is in Chicago, Chicago, on Chicago?
In there, actually, yes. The Grand Major Temple under, um, uh, Supreme Grand Chief Mayor of, right now. Which is, which is all over the line of, um, Millie. So you had, you had after Noguadi transition, you had a rightful successor. Then you have, um, individuals who wanted that, that power position. Right? And they wanted that power position because of what the Moors movement had at that time. When, you know, before Noguadi transition. We're talking about, you know, all these manufacturing companies that we had from, from, um, Noguadi's, Herbl, whatever, to candy factories, to fisheries. Moors had, right? You had a Grand Treasury. Where the Grand Treasury was where all the subordinate temple, all the Moors Science temples or whatever, when they get their dues, it goes to the Treasury. Now you're talking about billions of members at that time. Billions of members. And right now, we don't know what, Moors don't even know that there was a Treasury. Moors don't even know that it was manufacturing companies. Owned by Moors. That time. Moors don't even know that, that, you know, like, um, um, where they had the convention where they called Union Hall was, that was owned by the Moors. That wasn't some building they were renting. That was a Moors building. But where's Union Hall today? Where's the Treasury? You know, um, brother, brother Rancho Salado in California put out a video asking all these so-called grand chiefs or whatever, "Where's the Supreme Grand Council?"
Yes. Yes.
There was supposed to be a council of Moors that handled all the affairs for Moors. Where, where is that at?
And no, no one will address that question.
And nobody's not going to come up or say anything because, you know, Noguadi told Moors, the handful going to be saved with fingers left over. So everybody sold, you know.
So most people are under, but, um, Kirkland Bay, Sea Kirkland?
Right, most people are under Gibbons El, Kirkland Bay, Elijah Pool Bay. Who do they call Elijah Muhammad today? Um, the so-called Hebrews Delights. Those people, because remember, they came out of the Moors, Zionist Jews, right? Who were, who were the, the, the so-called black Jews that even went to Highness Lass's coronation? That was Moors that were, that were Hebrews. Not Hebrews, not Hebrews. Not Hebrews, not Hebrews. That was moors that were Hebrews that got invited to go to Heiliger's last coronation. From Harlem.
Because Hebrews is like an action, action.
Right? Okay? All the so-called Christian, whatever, you know, religious leaders or whatever, all those individuals from, you know, Sutai and all these people, all these individuals who were, had some type of connection to the Moorish movement. And they decided to, you know, scatter, go in a different direction, and why they scattered whatever, all the so-called moors who were under Kerpen Bay, Gibbons El, Nomax Day, all these people scattered. They would call themselves reincarnated temples and say that their grand chief is Noguajali reincarnated. You know, because somebody said he had a crescent star in his eye and stuff like that. That's what made him be a authority and all that. And then people ran with that, because their mindset was not leader. Their mindset was follower, so after Noguajali died, because they didn't study. They felt whatever happened. Somebody says, "Mores are black people?" "All right, go with that, he has a presence," so he doesn't know what he's talking about. But hey, that's not really what it was about.
So like the 13th and 14th amendment, and that started to occur, was when we were finding ourselves trying to go back to our nationality and stuff, and they, they kind of like instituted that to make everybody comfortable and stay how they were.
If, if, when we look at the constitution for the republic, right? The constitution for the republic only has 10 little rights.
First 10 amendments.
Anything after 10 amendments is colored.
Okay, so.
So when you start talking about 13, 14, 15, 20, whatever amendment, you already know that that's not the constitution that is the supreme law. That's the constitution that indicated that they were whatever, that took their checks, gave up their seat of power in Congress or whatever, make sure they push this through, give them their seat of power in Congress, make sure that they push this through without a constitutional convention. So now, you know, the people have the say in what that document is, because the document's supposed to be we the people and then the United States. But we the people are excluded from even having a say in the document. Right? So by the time you get to 14, 15th amendment and all that, this is why in 2009, we're always telling the people, "That doesn't apply to you." There were not 27 amendments yet. There were 15 and all that, we used to tell them, "That doesn't apply." 14th and 15th amendment doesn't apply because they weren't constitutionally ratified. That was just some individuals that said, "Yeah, let's just add these onto the constitution, because the people need whatever, the people are missing that, the people need whatever." They never conversed with the people about making those changes. And then because people didn't know law, didn't know that it was supposed to be a constitutional convention, if you're gonna amend the constitution, then they acquiesce, they default. Not complaining about people violating their rights. Well, they gave them the power by not standing up for the constitution. That all the so-called black leaders, by Noguajali, was taught. Make sure you guys teach the people about the constitution so they know this document. It's important for them to know, because the constitution is what we're gonna use to make the Europeans say, "Oh, sorry, you didn't mean to violate," or whatever like that, because that's their orders. That's their instructions. That's not our instructions. Constitution is the instructions for them. So they don't violate. And the only reason that they're violating is because we want to push statutes and codes and ordinances as a law. And that's not a law. Supreme law violates constitution. And that is seven articles, 10 little rights. And then that's it. Anything else is colored and should not even be considered as something that the moors use as a reference point.
Those are, those are basically the foundation for strong man. Strong man for everybody, the entire, we were. So if you had 10% of the population giving you free labor, and then you free those 10%, then you can take 100% and tax them 15% and you're still getting the same amount of money. Right? And everybody has a strong man and everybody, you know, pays that 15% tax income, because there was a war and you had to pay for the war. You know, and certain groups lost the war, so they felt sad and they felt, you know, that they had to be repaid. So, you know, it's a business contract, everything after that is a business contract. 13, 14, 15, 16, it's a business contract.
But the, so the war wasn't, wasn't it, where like, like your taxes was installed for US? USA?
That's 1850, so it's not, it's not USA, still the United States of America. Had that republic at that time, it's after that, that's, that was.
The Disher government.
Disher. But that's, after that is, it falls away, because you have them perpetuating the war measures act, which imposes in income tax on everybody, which is unconstitutional.
So at that time, is when you could have used a red with the banner on it too?
At that time?
Yeah.
Oh yeah. Lincoln, Lincoln defended it with moors. Lincoln, there's a case where Lincoln defended it with moors.
Yeah, he was a lawyer.
Yeah. Before he became president.
But now putting the banner on it wouldn't do anything, because it's the fact, right?
If, if you use the banner by itself, the banner has to be accompanied. If the banner is not accompanied with anything else, then yeah, it's an error on the part of the loser.
Okay, so when you're bringing, when you're using the banner with something else, you're giving power back to the public side?
Right. Right. Because, because like, like you're saying, that people miss that it's a banner. It's not a flag. So to identify it as a flag, yeah, well, you know, the flag of the United States and then show the stars and stripes, you just give the democracy all your power. Because that's a banner. No different than, you know, Canada, yeah, Canada flag, not a flag, that's a banner.
That's like using one side of the US dollar, the seal.
Right.
Just a red sense of the book.
Right. And then that's what, and that's the example of how it's supposed to be demonstrated. You're not gonna show the eagle seal without the pyramid. If you only showed the eagle seal, then obviously you're an imposter or whatever, because you should have the pyramid seal as well.
And that was a treaty.
Because both should, both should be represented. That's why I got two seals, but literally it says one. It should say two, if it's two different stuff. But then, you know, the people aren't even going that far. And that's in their face, they run their pocket, pull that on every day. And don't recognize that it's one.
It's a business.
Right? And then the same people, I am a segment, and all these people say that they're pyramid builders, but they're not gonna go claim the pyramid. But they do the pyramids, though. But they're not gonna go. Moors are, moors are silent, white man or whatever, and masons and all that. Masons don't claim that the pyramid is theirs. They never claim that that's theirs. People put that on them. Just like Europeans never claimed on the white man. People put that on them. And then they go, "What do you put on them?" Because, you know, "Hey, if you're gonna give me the power, if you're gonna say that the pyramid seal represents us as Europeans, then we're running with that."
Okay, what would this say?
Then we're gonna use these people forever with their own birthright.
I just wanted to get back, sort of not get back, but sort of just to, I think, from my perspective, the meeting here represents your guys, you know, I sort of see this, you know, when you see some of this, sort of, you know, sort of television movie stuff, it's you guys here with concerns or, you know, interests in those things. This is you as the body. To me, I sense this is a great sort of history and stuff, but it's, this is stuff that we're doing every Sunday, sort of thing. This is here for you guys now, to sort of, you know, we as, we as the body, we wanna talk about this stuff. And this is all, to me, really key stuff, but this forum, for me, is for you guys as the body to sort of communicate how you're wanting to, your concerns, your issues. Not sort of, in my mind, generalized questions about stuff, not that, I don't know.
I think there's a lot of.
I mean, it's connected.
Members, they still does.
Okay, no, I'm saying, I feel it's connected, but I just sort of sense that, that's what I sort of thought. I don't know, it was just more of a, you guys coming here as the body to sort of maybe, you know, expound on stuff. And you maybe want to start implementing and getting us to implement for you. If I may, I myself am willing to teach martial arts if there's interest. I'm willing to give my time and give all the classes. Location can be wherever the location needs to be. If there's an interest, I'll teach.
I would be interested in it.
So, and as far as that, as far as space, I know that we have, we have access to this space. It's just for the, put in a request for the space. Which we'll, you know, we'll build on that, whatever. This is somewhere that you wanna, you know, somewhere you wanna use.
Well, as, as in martial arts, the temple is anywhere that's being taught.
Right.
It's, it's, you can teach anywhere, as long as people are willing to learn.
Right.
It can be taught.
And your application, right?
My application, Troy Lee, I think.
Troy?
Lee.
Lee. Alright, so, whether Troy is offering services, teaching martial arts?
And for, for the record, for those that don't know, I'm a certified international instructor with the International Temple Nuketarian. I have a school rented. I'll just put it up to you from, because I've been here for a while, just to, sorry. Just to let you know that you may find it, you may not be that of interest to be found, you know. I'm grateful for that, just don't get discouraged by that reflecting certain things. I just, I just say that from my heart.
The opportunity is there for people to learn, we go, we serve those a lot of learn.
Oh, you're gonna say that, because we had a sister who was looking to have a school with some children come to me, I think.
How many?
One. One. So just, and I want to say that just so that you live and understand too, that is, you're going to, you're looking to manifest, and you already have manifested that. I just say that because I don't want you to take people's non-interest as an indication of it. Or, or it is an indication, or it's not, right? To a certain thing, to what it reflects within the greater.
And I brought, one of the stuff that's affecting me right now, so, um, everybody just like daycare? Like daycare is like.
Huge, yeah.
Huge.
It's interesting, you know, it's like, uh, my younger sister is involved in food services and she really likes to work with children. And I was coming from one of my slaves, I was walking by a lady and she was towing these three little, towed them. She was sort of guiding these three off from along. And I realized that, just tell by the energy, that she was like a caregiver, sort of looking after these children. And I sort of said, so, and I realized as I've been walking along the street, there was a house that had all these like toys and stuff in the center, so I connected the two. She was like a few feet away from this house and it looked like, it was sort of like set up as a play yard. And I asked her, and basically she said that she found a school for early child development and all this kind of stuff, but that technically anyone can open up a daycare. Or, or, right? Anyone can do that. And I think the sort of regulation, you're like, you can have up to five people, I think. But I can't remember, basically, you don't have to go through any of this stuff. The only time you ever get into trouble is when, can't remember what she was saying, but the only time you ever get into trouble is when you start sort of sucking into their jurisdiction. Again, that's when you sort of have to have these requirements. But ultimately, the right to have a daycare is anyone's, right? And if you can have it to five children, and I think, you know, I think I was talking to someone else, I mean, maybe it's a hundred dollars, two hundred a week, but I mean, you have five children, about a hundred, two hundred, that's, that's six hundred, seven hundred dollars. So there's money, there's finance there. It just, I think it's a lot of energy. You know, it takes some structure, it sets things up, the house has to be set up properly, all those kind of things, so. I've been thinking of that as something that needs to be developed. I just think that what it takes is someone having that, you know, the wherewithal to sort of, "Okay, I'm gonna take my house, I'm gonna take my living room, I'm gonna convert that over, I'm gonna, you know, donate some toys, you know, meals, all those kind of things." That would have to do with daily, looking after children for a day, right?
So I don't know, just to put it, to put it on the record as well, keep in mind that these services were provided at one time in this city, so-called city. Right? That was available. Daycares slash kindergartens that were run by our people, teaching our culture to our people. And then they opened Afrocentric School, which was free. And then everybody took their children out of the independent, quote-unquote, African-centered schools to put them into so-called Shepherd and Kilo Afrocentric School. Right? And since that school been open, they probably trained up to five principals or whatever. Right? You know? The people who had quote-unquote independent schools, all those schools closed down. There's not one that's available right now. There's not even the people who were running them around doing anything relative to schooling anymore. Because all the so-called people who were for their people, for the conscious community, whatever, took their children out to go to a free school that Europeans have. Which is why we have nothing right now.
Well, it was interesting just how these things tie together, like, sister did that. And I ended up, before I came to this movement, I was sort of, I think I knew I was on this timeline, but I met a so-called charter mason here, and I went to a Masonic event, the European Mason, York, right? And there was the principal. From, the principal from this Afrocentric, second Afrocentric school was giving a talk there. So you realize it's all connected, and what really, what was that plan? You know, possibly what they saw, this is why you have to look at things from a bigger sort of perspective. This movement is back, not because of us, it's back because the time is here. We're not old, we're not new spirits, we're old spirits. This has come back because we're back around now. And what you realize is things were starting to happen. And then what they had to do is they had to counter this. So then they got someone, another guy, to set this up. And then what if they lose it, and this is what they do, they don't always kill it. They sometimes they just choke it up a little bit, and that causes everything, right? They just don't give it any water. And so that's what they've done. And then, and then what they've done is now, because that thing was never meant to be, the sort of structure that was probably set up, we don't know the inner, and I think now that I've heard some stuff that was going on there, that there were issues, that's why there's so many principals. There were issues between stuff trying to get done and people wanting stuff to get done. And then, so what happens is people get frustrated and see this again and again, well, hey, I'm looking against a red wall. I'm, you know, some people just don't have that kind of energy, so I'm just gonna step away. And that's what they've done, they've effectively destroyed, you know, this whole network that really should have been there. Right?
So, and, and you know, with, 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 you know, this is where the unity aspect and the nationality comes into play, that if these individuals who had these schools were competent, were all family, all of them would have came together and had a super school. Opposed to saying, well, now we're gonna throw it in and let them do whatever. However, we all come together, since we all, you know, had schools, and have a super school to challenge that school.
They want to be the first.
But everybody wants to be the man.
And so the other thing too, this is, I've talked to Noguajalies too. One of my dreams is, we have our temple there, and my dream, and talking to people about this, is getting like a real building, something like this. As an example, on some level where, you know, you have your temple on Sunday, but Monday through Friday, why wouldn't this then be the daycare? You see what I mean? Why haven't we come together like this? You know, I can find my finance for everything else, but I can't find it to put together the real stuff. That's to me, the level I'm on now. We're sort of there, but we're not there to the next level, because we've still been.
We're almost there, yeah.
We're still indoctrinated. We still haven't, you know what I mean, the door is open, but we just don't know that it's now about taking our finance and putting it, that's why the prophet said, "I need finance and I need it now." And yet we'll have a problem trying to. And yet we'll have a problem trying to pull in a little bit of finance for some garbage here, that will throw away hundreds on everything else, right?
Yeah, because we invested so much time in the financing.
Well, and it's hard for us now to disconnect, right? And as well as it then takes an admission from yourself, to look yourself in the mirror and go, wow! You know, what I've realized with a lot of people, it's better to go down, it's better to go down with a fraud, in their mind, than to have to turn around and admit that, you know, that something, you know, I made a mistake, you know what I mean? I was wrong. And that to me, and that's what they talk about still with some of the stuff they're saying, we're hard, stiff-necked, what is it? Hard-headed, stiff-necked people will not admit to anything except at the point of a sword. The reason why that is, that's our problem.
But the Pope's going out right now.
Same nonsense, same, you know, and listen...
All that stuff, and then he's getting interviewed, but all these Europeans, the last name is Moore.
That's right.
David Moore, Trevor Moore, it's all spelled different, Michael Moore, um...
That's right. And you know what? That's all the quoting that is, right? He's not, he's not here at this, he's not here at this time while the Hajj is going on in Mecca for no reason. You know what I mean? That's gotten tied together. How come the Hajj is going on, and he's here doing his thing?
Right.
Right? And the full moon lunar eclipses tonight, right? We're missing, we miss all of this, right? And we go back and, you know what I mean? We turn on the TV, we watch football.
Distraction.
It's absolutely, so that's why, to me, coming here for this town hall, it's about looking at ourselves in the mirror and saying, what are we gonna do? We're all gonna go back, we go back to the slave, and go watch some basketball next week, right? Or the Blue Jays, you know, I don't know.
Oh, I just want us to be like a building, that's the thing.
Well, you see what we know already, right? The buildings are ours, right? Really what it would take is us coming together, and you know, like, I was talking to Grand Chido about this, right? It would really take, let's say, as a theoretically, would be someone with, let's say, a so-called straw name, coming together and maybe putting a down payment or a so-called mortgage on a building to begin with, to open up the fraudulent thing that they've got. And then once that's open, we need to be in our square, and then we just claim it. That's really all it would take, but you know what I mean? Tomorrow I'm on the slave for twelve, thirteen hours. So are you, and that, that's the same distraction that we're talking about. So we too...
Is that, is that possible for our generation, or...
Is it? I would say it is. I'm saying we're right there. This is a manifestation of that. But what I know, and I've been talking with administrators, what I know, you see my little notebook? It's like this, I gotta, I'm talking to Supreme about this. First thing to me is key, that everything is organization.
Yeah.
We have to become organized. Once we become organized, and that's why I was talking with Archiva, once we get our stuff organized, because, you know, it's like coming to a room, and the room's dirty, and there's stuff everywhere. Your mind is dealing with the clutter. You gotta clean that stuff up, make it neat, and then we can move forward. But while we're still caught up in the clutter, it's gonna take a supreme set of people to move beyond the clutter. So what I sense is, first of all, clean up the clutter, right? And that to me, and that's why I was talking to, you know, and they'll speak to this too, that what can we do in this temple to clean up the papers, to, you know, okay, stack the walls? It's not really about that. But really, to me, it is about that. It's about becoming absolutely organized, and then we can move forward, right? And we have to, and I think I was reading USA, Unity Salvation, a lot, right? Unifying is the first thing. If we get a single-minded goal, it's over for them. Problem is, we leave from here right now, as I said. And not to say any of us will, but you know, I mean, hey, I find myself, and sometimes, you know, if I'm doing something, and I turn on the thing to check out a little news story or something, or to see what the weather is, or goes by the Blue Jays? I may stick on the Blue Jays for a little half an hour or something, you know what I mean? And I realize, and that I realize is the surface, the surface lower part being sucked into the indoctrination that I've had. I've made huge steps. I used to sit around on Sundays watching football all day. Now I don't know what football is.
What's the major, is the major purpose for technology today?
Technology, to me, the internet was to me, what I realized, because remember, they're in control, they burn all the books, but don't think they didn't keep some of the real ones, right? So what the internet and this stuff is to me, is the fact that they knew that on a biological level, we were coming to the time where we were gonna be connected in thought. And what they did is they put this in between us.
That's right.
And so it's done, it's done.
That's what that's made the purpose.
So that's, but that's the major purpose to everything. You don't get it, to get distracted with this, but that's also what working is about. It's the same distraction, taxes, government, all that stuff. I'm not saying that we're gonna have to take it in small steps, but ultimately, this is what this town hall meeting is. And I was saying this today to Kuto. This is on point on you. When we leave here today, are you calling you? Are you talking to you? Probably not. And I'm not saying that that's the problem, but until we get to that, it is, it is, right? You know, I always mention this, because when you guys came in here, you know, certainly these European neighbors, they'll have PTA meeting, and the mothers all getting together, and they're all figuring out their stuff. And then they're going back to the school board and telling the school board what to do. You know what I mean? So, that's where I'm at. We've got something great here. Uh, we just have to continue to organize and continue to move forward. And one of the things I was talking to them about is sort of having them, I think you guys should implement this too, as in the body, is having short, medium, and long-range plans. What's our short-range plans? What's the plan for the next six months to year? What are we as the body gonna do? We're gonna organize, we're gonna, you know, figure out our resources? Maybe your plan, whatever. We have, we have that one out right now, our three to five-year plan is to make sure that if we need to go down to see our brothers in the so-called South Eugency, that we've dealt with those colonizers who are supposedly saying that that can't be US border, is some kind of order. So that's a five-year plan. That's what I'm telling you, and I think you all know this too. The so-called Israelis have a five-hundred-year plan.
Yeah.
They're five hundred years. We can't even figure out what we're doing next week. We're in trouble.
Yeah, with regard to the building as well.
Um, also, looking into properties that are quote-unquote abandoned, you know, that are documented as a ban. Because in, in, um, in the West End, when they had Marcus Garvey Center, they got that living for a dollar. I'm saying, one dollar.
It's a lot of money.
Dollar. And, and they lost it.
Oh, it rocked the earth?
No, just by being negroes.
Well, not with that, but, and listen, we can't, we can't always forget about the fact that, not only like he's saying being negroes, which I would say is omission, of just being negroes, but there's also commission. Those are the two, two types of sin. It's committing one, and by your admission, having a sin happen. So to me, not only could it have been just, what do you call it? This mismanagement, but it also could have been forces in there that were actually doing that. So, don't ever, I say, don't always ever forget about that, right?
Yeah, and so, so these are the things, like, when you say the body, right? So, it'll be opposed to, opposed to us figuring it out. You figure it out, and then present your findings. Or then we assist you in, you know, whatever it is that needs to be done in order for your will to manifest.
That's really what the government should have been up. Here's an example. You would have a much, a more cultural event, where you'd meet for a dinner. And five of you would be sitting on the table, talking about wanting a daycare. You guys would then organize yourselves, and start off getting your stuff together, come and present the stuff to the grand body, to the administrative body, who would then, who would then, what do you call it? Give that, give that stuff life, which you already have, and actually have the backing of the government behind it, and then it happens. We're tough, the thing is, I think Kujo was saying this earlier, there's only a few of us. We can only do so much. We've got stuff, we've got stuff on the fire, you know what I mean? But it's, we can't do a thousand things. Right? Neither can you. And that was the other thing that I realized too, is that, and I was saying this to them too. We've got to, we've got to refine our scope, right? I was, I was listening to them, and I was saying, food, clothing, shelter. If we could get those three things dealt with, food, clothing, shelter, then we could take care of the problem. But already, we have to go to them for food, and go to them for shelter, and go to them for clothing, we're done. Right? If we have food, clothing, shelter, guaranteed, didn't have to pay for anything of that, you could then make some moves. But already, like, you know, your same twenty dollars that you get today, you gotta go spend fifteen of it, they're taking three dollars right to begin with, right? First of all, from the, from the coming in, and then going out. I mean, we start working that out, right? A hundred dollars on your check, let's say they take, the so-called check, they take twenty dollars, take twenty dollars, right? And then you go buy something from the store. Out of the hundred dollars, you only got sixty-five dollars. We haven't figured that out. You know, and then they're taxing, and I realize too, taxing on everything that you do. Anything that you wanna do, you wanna drive a car, you gotta pay for this. You wanna do this, you gotta do that. It's madness, absolute craziness.
Like thirty-eight percent tax.
And the thing is, we're overwhelmed, we're overwhelmed. So what we have to do, step back, slow down, make a plan, organize. That's what they're doing, they're doing it on our knowledge.
Okay, by next town hall meeting, what's the, what's the plan?
I mean, what?
Well, a recap from last town hall meeting. Uh, we decided that it should be every two months. Uh, there is to be an on-call or emergency meeting, and we could do that with the witnessing, with myself and Grand Chief. So we, it's documented, and we're aware. Um, one of the administrators can be here to document it.
And emergency is not, you know, something happening, something negative or whatever. You know, I mean, emergency is...
What does that imply just an emergency meeting?
Like, okay, um, um, let's say, somebody gives you two days to make a decision on, you know, this twenty million dollar grant that they want to do, as an emergency meeting, right?
You guys maybe have a daycare, right? Some stuff has come down, let's say as an example, and they're looking to do something. And we need to get together as a body, and people are...
Figure out what our move is to deal with them harassing or whatever. Like, like the situation that was going on with Brother Norman, right? That, you know, that, that, it wasn't necessarily, um, a meeting, but he called the Grand Chief, right? Like, he called one of the people in command for assistance, right? So even, even on that, you know, it wasn't even just him, because, you know, Brother Rafael was another party that was involved in the negotiations with regard to his space. You know, because he had indirect access to him to have a physical body there, that, so he's just not in his own, you know, Brother Norman had his daughter that was there, so that this sort of colonizer is not looking at, oh, this guy is on his own, he can take advantage of him or whatever. They not had to back off, because it wasn't a normal situation even for them to do. Because hardly ever you have, you know, so-called, you know, black guy saying that, oh yeah, well, I got a console, and I have this individual I can call, and I have this individual I can call, that, you know, is gonna be intimidated, because, you know, as a mark, we know that we're, one of us is a thousand milers. You know what I mean? So, you know, emergency, you know, like, if it's something, you know, life or death, nine-one-one, as far as emergency or whatever, because, you know, we have, they have obligation for service. So it's not a negative to call it, you know what I mean? Um, but as far as our workings, you know what I mean? Emergency is anything that we actually deal with that, um, we should get together to be involved because of, you know, circumstances.
So that's an individual emergency kind of thing?
Hmm, an individual emergency, that, that is reflective of the body, the life, the body. But some of the things, just to go from here, just so, because I can now personally speak to this. One of the things that I wanted to sort of get out here is that, I've been in here now four years, and I was talking to Grand Chido about this. Every year we have a Nubu Dura Lii Day, which is supposed to bring together all of us to sort of celebrate this, this, this nation. And I can tell you, the same people that were here last year were the same people that were here three years ago, right? So part of, and one of the issues here is overstating that this isn't about today. It's about five years from now. Are all, are all of us gonna be here five years from now? Because most of this isn't gonna work. And what the problem has been is people step in and step out at will. So first of all, you have to have a unified will, and you could understand this personally from, from, from structure of going, I'm gonna see this through. If you don't see this through, it's done. So part of it too would be organizing yourselves. What would happen is you want to organize yourselves, you want to have names. PT, I'm using PTA parent-teacher, because some of us, I see, you know, you would be calling people. PTA people call people, you know, they call the parents, and we're gonna have meeting. You would have maybe a spokesperson. He's really the, like, the head of that. But you would have someone from the body who would be connecting with him. You would be communicating together. As I said, to me, I like, you know, what do they, they do, so I can't do the analogy now, when you're, oh, it's even the fascia, when the sticks are all together, they can't break them. But when the sticks are apart, they get broken. So the issue is, is that we can talk like this, but in six months from now, the faces are different. We're in trouble. And that's what, and you would know, and I know some of the more of the Black, but when anyone who's been here for a minute, we'd know that that's the major part of this problem.
And, and part of that comes down to the individuals looking here for leadership when the leadership is really there.
But not only that, also not overstating exactly what this is about. Because for the, for the most part, they've come into this from a perspective that's wrong, thinking somehow that the colonizer owes them something, and that they're somehow gonna get some little, figure out some little subsection too that's gonna open this up. You've got to understand this about you stepping up to something and making it happen. Start taking, stop paying that money and giving it to them, instead of giving it to yourself. But they've also got you convinced that by paying a mortgage and doing that, you get that thing that's for yourself, and you spent fifteen years to do it. By the time you finally cleared yourself, you're sixty, sixty-five, seventy, and you don't have the energy to do anything. And young children, they've got, over messing around on the streets, creating families without the foundation. So they got it from the top to the bottom, right? And it's, and in the middle, they call these things midlife crises. You know it's called a midlife crisis, because you finally figure out what the hell's going on, and you're in the middle of your life, and, and, and you can't do anything, because maybe you have some offspring, and you're caught up with that, and you get, right, or contract or jump, or whatever. So that's, to me, the biggest thing to me is to go home tonight and go, am I really? And no one can say that your answer today is gonna be answered tomorrow. But if you don't understand that this is not something that's gonna be solved in two years, it's gonna take two hundred years. Once you understand that, and then you understand what organization? I mean, we've had adept, adept counsel, nine, ten people. With only three, four left from four years ago, three years ago, because those other ones dropped by the wayside. But what we've now realized is we're not, we're not bringing anyone in anything new to this anymore. I use this analogy, because I used to play basketball, or played a lot of basketball, better to have a strong three than a week eight, right? So we're gonna play three on three, because that's what we can play on now. But we ain't gonna bring in, we're not gonna play five-on-five, because two of the members, you know, I was using analogies where, you know, one of them's talking to the other team, telling the other team what's going on. The other guy, he never practiced. You know, you got three guys who never even show up for practice.
Yeah, that's it.
No. So to me, you gotta reorganize, and I know my, yes, someone in the back knows that. It's like, you gotta have a, you, you're gonna have a strong team with what you got, you're not gonna try and overstep what you got to, to create something. Because you think that that's, you know, that that sounds good, we got a, a team of five, and we got six subs. Meanwhile, as I said, four of them, four, you know, three of the, two of the main guys aren't even, aren't even practicing. The other four members show up. We're, we're in trouble. So as I said, stepping forward, what I think for you guys would be to, I mean, this is really amongst those, I mean, it's sort of, that's why maybe these things can change, really, you know what? Maybe it doesn't have to be this formal kind of thing anymore, maybe you can sit down and people should be sort of, you know, di- and this is where I see most of the dialogue happening. It's not these structured situations, it's sort of more informal, you know, like even a barbecue, you're sitting around, you're talking about stuff. You know, and that's, you know, it's sort of, and we know this, it's never in the surface that any of that stuff is done, even on the bigger level. It's usually behind, the, uh, this man on the phone with the other man, creating something, and then bringing it. Right? Because these formal things are too big to be really organized too well, because there's too many energies.
What, what this is, is this is, this is government. You know, most of your form of government. And, uh, and so, future meetings, like I said, if you're at the last meeting, you take out a phone, or, does anybody have any motions? Motion would be heard, if it's seconded. If it's seconded, folks will, uh, vote. Uh, if it's voted on, um, it's passed, if it's not, it's not, if it's timed, whatever. Um, and we go through motions like that, and build up your, your standards, your national standards. Um, as a unit, and so, that's, that's sort of the ideal, that's an objective, that's a goal to reach. In the meantime though, everything else that Omar is talking about is part of it, um, uh, the informal stuff is really what supports that, and what makes, what makes it real. You know what I mean? This is, this is just to be able to say to anybody outside that, um, yeah, it's official, and we here witnessing it, um, are, you know, on the paper, in all these different jurisdictions, that, yeah, we, um, sit on this board for this temple, and it also doubles as our seat in the government of, of you, of the Moorish Americans here in...
And that would reflect, i.e. as the law. Let's say, so the law, you know, you can vote on that, if it's passed, then really, a writ will be made up, an affidavit that would then state that, it would be signed, sealed, and that would be the law. That would be, that would, that would, and that's what I was talking to you about before, about creating that, that would then, you know, uh, the law, that would then be part of our regency. Which would, could be different from the so-called New York Regency, right? But, you know, one of the things, just, these are organizational things, I mean, you could create a list. Everyone would sign their name here today, and then, let's see, six months from now, the same things are here. We have a supposedly, we have a hundred people on the email list that are supposed to, which supposedly are a hundred Moors, right? So we got seventeen here, so I was working on it earlier, just as people tripled in. There was twelve of us, so I realized that meant that ten percent of us showed up. Right? Which is still what I think, well, you said nine people is the core, right?
Yeah.
But ten percent, ten percent showed up, that was about eighteen, so that's maybe around eighteen percent showed up. But the next one is gonna be eighteen, is it gonna be the same eighteen? Right? So all those questions, that's the organizational part that would happen, right? You have a list that would, okay, all the Moors were here, next, if, if next temple meeting, all of you are here again, then we got something. If you're here six months from now, then we really got something.
But, and also, um, like, this, this year isn't everything, right? Like we said, like, if you get together on your own, that's, that's the foundation of, of everything else, right? But what are you, you know, what are you, what's your, what are you getting together about? So my thing is, you know, part, partly you have to, one, you have to ask yourself, what am I gonna offer to this? You know? 'Cause it's two thousand and fifteen, and, you know, it might be another fifty years until, you know, people on the heads of governments are saying, yeah, over there, in the West, that place is Morocco, where the Moorish Americans are outwardly in the news and everything else. So for you to be here, you have to be asking yourself, why am I here right now? And not asleep with fifty million other people. Right? So there must be something, right? So, and then we should, we should, we should know each other, you know what I mean? And know what are the, what are the moves we have to offer, you know what I mean? It's not gonna be everything that you're able to do at once, like Omar said, you know, bite off a little bit at a time, so, um, like, for instance, me, myself, like I said, I'm the chairman, but, but I actually do, so while I'm, I did this right now, uh, I work in the solar industry. I do solar services, so we do installations, uh, maintenance, repairs, et cetera. I do that regular basis, I work with, I'm self-employed, I work with another partner of mine that I went to school with. Um, and that's, that's a lucrative industry that's, it's young and it's growing. Um, but I, I would encourage people to, to look into it, look into, um, the programs that they have on Terry's, or the program that profit, where they pay you for the energy they produce. Um, and so, you know, I can, you know, I can speak to brothers and sisters about that. I can speak to brothers and sisters, and build brothers and sisters about, um, you know, coding, you know, that, a lot of that, I went to school, uh, for engineering. So, um, these are the things that personally I can give. And if you wanna go around, each person can, if you want to, um, share, you know, your, 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 your skill. Your skill, your curriculum vitae, whatever you wanna talk about.
But then, uh, Grand Chief made a good point, 'cause I had this thought a couple of weeks ago, why don't we get everyone in a list of what everyone does, and have it out there? And then Grand Chief made a good point that we're not gonna put this list out to then have someone call you to come and do some classes, and then you can't show up to do classes. You see what I mean? So he felt that there's also something to that too, which is, if that's who you are, and that's who you have to be, and you have to be ready to be doing that as that, and not just putting that out there, sort of as a willy-nilly sort of thing, right? And then one of the things, and just like, giving you guys some of the stuff that we're talking about, one of the questions I've started to ask ourselves, and like, uh, Tazza said, what is our legacy gonna be? What are we looking to leave to people, our children, our offspring? So that could be a good perspective to see that, 'cause we're probably not gonna see the fruition of everything we want. But what, are we, can we build a proper foundation for the, for the ones coming behind us? And that's really where I see some of the sin being, right? We're not gonna be able to build the skyscraper. If we can lay the, if we can lay the, uh, foundation, and I mean a real foundation, then, then we've done our part.
Ian United would get that done.
Pardon?
Ian United would get that done.
And organize. So, but that's, but that's why we're speaking from this, 'cause, and that's why, you know, you make sometimes eye contact, 'cause we've been here before through this. I call this the matrix, 'cause he's been through this seven, maybe seven times, six times, or sort of, seven times? I've been through this three times already. God, group of people, ready to do things, and then it all falls partly through omission or commission, happened three, three times.
And Billy the Sun Project?
Billy the Doctor is still alive.
Billy the Doctor is still alive?
One hundred percent.
And, and it's affecting us.
Well, let me, let me give you guys a piece of, uh, something to share that, from my personal, on my side. Um, right now, there's a company called Tesla. You've heard of Tesla, you see these cars that look like super sports cars, the symbol is a T, they run on batteries, electrical power. They have no combustion engine. They, they burn no fuel. You plug them into your wall at home, and overnight, and in the morning, you drive, you drive zero, sixty, and three-second faster than most of the people on the roof on batteries. Okay? They have, uh, energy that they just came up with. So it's a department of their main company. Right now, their company is huge on the long walk street, it's like, I don't know, how many million people it's worth.
They wanna build a kilowatt factory? That division, they wanna build a kilowatt factory?
Kilowatt, well, their first unit is called a power wall. And basically, it's a, it's a storage unit, about maybe this big, you know, a couple, two feet by three feet. Um, maybe six-inch deep, so it'll sit literally on your wall, and that could provide you with enough electricity to power a small house. If you have two of those, you can power the average house.
They come in two different sizes.
Yeah. So it's seven point five kilowatt, maybe the average size, so two of those, um, you power your whole house, and they're, they're retailing at thirty-five hundred dollars. So for under ten thousand dollars, right? If you have panels, solar panels on your roof, you can be off the grid, no electricity. Too late, right? So it's not like, oh, in fifty years, it's gonna become too late. Right? Now, yeah, that's an investment, because, yeah, it's about the solar panels, who uses that electricity? Right? And that's another investment, twenty-three thousand dollars.
And they guarantee it'll manage in ten years.
There you go. So, that's, 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 that's the real sort of changes that are happening. Uh, these are the things that, these are the things that are contrary to what's being, um, sort of pushed on, on, on the minds in the media, that, you know, one percent control everything, and there's all this negative skew on everything, and, and there's no way out. And, um, the reality is that one percent, no, no one, however, controls a majority of people. You only influence them, you only benefit a majority, you don't control a majority, 'cause you can't control a majority. One can't control a majority. It's against the laws of man, it's against the laws of the universe. Right? So as soon as you believe that, you've already got outside of Moorish science. That's not Moorish science, Moorish science is in line with the laws of the universe, it's a model. Right? So, so what, what we have to, uh, sort of, think about too is like, what, what, what is the movement gonna look like in twenty years when the concept of paying for electricity, any kind of substantial amount, is a thing of the past, where infinite money, but the end, and you're everywhere. You can move a mile without having to think of having to pay for anything. Charge anything, power your whole house, whatever, right? What is it gonna look like in, you know, twenty years when, you know, in the school system, not in twenty years, so next year, when they're teaching youth about, um, you know, seven different sexes, I believe. And there's no, if you, if you're a youth in school, that's it, that's what they, there's no, you know, point in that. Right? Right? It's not about necessarily living like today, it's about living what it is gonna be tomorrow, you know? So, um, yeah, that's, that's kind of what helps guide me, you know what I mean? Helps, uh, keep me focused and keep me positive, and, um, and see through like a lot of bullshit, you know, to be honest. But it's, uh, a lot of bullshit out there, but there's a lot of, uh, really interesting things out there that are, uh, in line with what we want to do.
So don't, do we not need to secure our estate? For, for our children, and for our, our future generations? Our future generation?
Your, your state is, what, what's your name?
My name, uh, my name is Troy Lee Allen.
That's your state?
Yes, it is.
So, is it secure?
Yeah.
It's not?
It's not secure.
Okay, so if I go outside right now, I say Troy Lee Allen Bay, um, is, uh, you know, a channel founder. And I'm gonna say that, and I'm gonna use the media, and I say that to them. Do you have no recourse?
I do have recourse.
And is it, is it like satisfactory to you?
No.
No? Okay, no. So Moorish science teaches you that that Troy Lee Allen Bay, the Bay title, is a Moorish American title.
Yes.
So if I go to a non-Moorish American entity, and say something about them, say something to them about you that isn't true, you have complete recourse. You go to them, and you tell them, that's not true. Unless there's evidence to prove it, denounce it, you know, go back, I mean, okay, if it's something serious or personal, and you got, once it's out there, it's been said, it's not complete recourse. But you have technical recourse, in other words, you have the ability to control the situation entirely, because you have control of that title and that, that application.
Yes.
That's what Drual, he came and gave you back your title. You walk around with Allen Bay, it's not just for kids, it's not just 'cause, you know, it sounds good or whatever. It's not, it's historical aspect to it, but it's more than that, it's, you walked around in this society with a title that other people can't walk around with, and use it the same way they can use it. You have complete one hundred percent control of it. When someone violates that, they cannot, they cannot do that without you coming back and correcting it. And they can't say anything about it.
So that's why the, the, uh, status and style and state, 'cause, 'cause it's, it's really you. Like, when people, when, when people say, um, um, oh yeah, Drual, you set up a trust, I wanna get my name onto the trust. The, the tru- the trust is abstract. The trust is in the paper, and it says trust on it, and then everybody signs it. The trust is, do you, do you trust the people who are trying to get you? You know, if you don't trust a little Drual, then don't think that you're gonna die to the trust.
'Cause that, if you don't trust them, you don't have faith.
You know what I mean?
You don't have faith, then you can't say you're a Moorish American, it's Islamism. Because if you, you're showing that you don't have faith.
Like, like, for, for example, like, um, um, Moors that, that, Moors that act and know all Allen Bay and their titles, right? But then they're gonna tell people, or call people black. But they're not gonna give up theirs and say that they're black. But they'll say, people are black. Oh, it's okay, they call us all black, you know, so meet them where they are, or whatever like that. That's not legitimate. You know what I mean? That's a, that's a fraudulent position. Because, uh, you know, like, you don't hear, um, you know, I'm Chinese, but I got a yellow. It's like, some of our people are yellow, and then some people are Chinese. That's not legitimate. That's a fraudulent position. And for us to, to, um, hold that fraudulent position, we, we are in control of our estate. You know? Um, we, we, just like we're saying, you can, you can get buildings for a dollar. Right? Could get a building for a dollar. With the research, with the final verdict, and then you can talk to the bank, or whoever claims that deal, and they'll work all the work, and we're supposed to get that building for a dollar. Right? Um...
But then again, so to interrupt, the other building, I think, it's a big building, and that was empty. So that's the other part of it, right? The first part is getting the building, and the next part is really doing the work. But what I realized back then was, it took so much effort, but once they got the building, they didn't have the mindset as to what, we had a Moorish, we had a Moorish, like, guy in there before, I don't figure that. Right? So that's why when you said that, I was like, great, but we had that, and then at least six or seven people were there. I, what I realized is that he expected that everyone was gonna come from the temple and be involved in that, and that that was gonna fund things, and that didn't happen. And I felt bad for him, and I specifically from the get-go said, I'm not gonna, I can't commit to that. But his feeling was, was that everyone was then gonna be part of the temple almost, right? And it never happened. And so then he lost, he lost his way because of that. And what we realized was that he came at it from the wrong perspective, right? Is that right? So, but that's why I made that statement before, right? Because we specifically had a man who, and we had a so-called donor who couldn't get the mats together. I was then running around, I was involved, and I was trying to find a finance to get the mats together. It was crazy stuff. And then at the end of it, he's disgruntled because we didn't help, help him run his school. And that wasn't what the deal was. We had said, we have space, you wanna run the school, fine, you're gonna have to put some finance into this. Right? So, just to let you know, we specifically been there, as a Moorish arts school, so, uh, so that's why I'm saying to you, I'm sure you've heard, that's why I'm saying to you though, just be cautious about thinking that, 'cause you got a Moorish, Moorish arts, as an example, that, 'cause that's what I'm saying, I don't take it that people will show up, 'cause that's what hu- human nature is. People are gonna say, you know, people are gonna pay for a personal trainer, and then that's your personal trainer, you're gonna do the work. You mad, you mad with her, or who do you matter, a personal trainer, or the person who paid and then didn't show up? I don't know, I can't be mad at anyone, I don't know if you can. But what I'm saying is, I'm trying to get people to get to that level to understand, and that's part of where the science is, understanding human nature. Right?
And, um, so, so, yeah, so, to kind of go back to what you're saying, what, what they say is, part of it, you have to think is, um, how, you have to, you have to ask yourself, how much is the ability, or is it the deterrent for people speaking about you?
All right, try to stop, please.
Writing about you, basically using your, your name, your title, right? Your application, how much does that worth? There's no value. Okay, so if you, you have something that's invaluable, right? And you have skills and abilities that you can market, right? Then it's only a matter of time to you build up whatever you need to build up. Because everybody, anybody else out there could, is gonna get attacked, they're gonna get competition, you do things, undermine them, whereas you might get those things, but if people are smart, they're not gonna come after you like that. Right? Because you don't go after somebody that you can't talk about, right? Because you're unalienable, because you have unalienable rights. Right? And part of, one, part of that is your title, it can't be meaningless. Right? So, you know, meanwhile, um, unfortunately, uh, people call themselves Jew who use the L, using their birthright. Right? People who call themselves, um, Arab, use the B, using their birthright.
True. You're true.
Right? 'Cause they know how, how valuable that is. Um, and so, uh, the concept, the concept is to sort of, that, if you can get that as a foundation, and really understand that, and you start off, and you'll be better off going forward, and doing everything else that you wanna do, and we wanna bring the people together too, right? Is to really get that concept in your head, like, oh, having a nationality, and having a title allows me, gives me this defense now. Right? So it's not, what can I, what can I get out of the system? It's, now I have this defense from things that might come from the system. So when I do whatever it is that I want to, from my own resources, my own work, hard work, it's still gonna be hard work. But I don't have to worry about those arrows flying down my head now so much, the way most people would have to do, just in this, you know, doggy doggy, right? It's like a free, a free shield. So if somebody is giving you, here, here's a shield, and then we look at it, and we think, oh, you know... And then we look at it and we think, "Oh, you know, I'm gonna get this traffic ticket with a shield," or, "No, get out of this." It's like, no. Live your dreams with a shield on your back. That should be the perspective.
Thank you.
I got a testimony, but I don't know what I should say for next week, Sunday. Put it out there. It's good because, um, so I had to deal with the colonizer, because this is, right, tribunal on Tuesday. From the first situation where, um, they, um, obviously kidnapped and harassed over some alleged driving offenses. So this is the first one that transpired, and it's over now. And it's pretty inky because they had, um, two much trauma tried to, um, tried to, um, the failure to identify obstructive justice, uh, driving a license, um, driving invalid sticker, insurance, the whole nine yards. And then they had, um, after they laid those, on the fresh trauma, and they added failure to appear for fingerprint, because I didn't know that either. So, uh, through the whole last five months, we're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth to the, uh, the so-called courts, and then, you know, putting on my necessary paperwork, putting on my RIS, placing everything on the record. And, you know, however they found their way to trial, they found a very so-called trial. So I had the so-called trial on Tuesday, and I'm ready now. I had filed a writ of, uh, man Davis, um, basically demanding that based on the fact that they didn't honor the ready to discover disclosure, they honored the, um, writ of ver, verdict of jurisdiction, they didn't honor my notice of default judgment, they didn't honor any of this. So I filed with him, man Davis, basically letting him know, "Listen, you guys definitely let me know you guys are a fraud. You guys didn't even gesture that you guys got any of this information, you know, you guys staffed the same, you guys received it." So I'm basically demanding that all this gets withdrawn. And I listed, uh, a whole bunch of, um, facts to basically say, "This is why you guys can't move forward halfway." So when I get there, the so-called prosecutor, he approaches me, and he's like, "So what do you wanna do today?" I'm like, "Uh, I'm gonna give you a whole bunch of documents you guys haven't responded to, so what do you guys wanna do today?" And he's like, "Okay, okay, so I guess he's thinking like, I was gonna come in, be like, you know what, I'm ready to settle, I'll, I'll, you just know what you're giving." And I'm like, so I basically showed him all the paperwork, I'm like, "Look at all these documents I have here, how come you guys haven't responded?" "What's supposed to be the Crown Prosecutor, what's going on?" He's like, "Okay, okay, we'll give you that, and, uh, we'll leave it back in the" so-called courtroom. I'm a guy, cool. Um, uh, the brother Tariq, he had, uh, got drawn up into the same situation, but they dropped all his, withdrew everything. Basically, they didn't have a case, right? So I went in there now, and I'm putting everything back on the record, letting the justice of peace know, like, you know, like, this is the best, you know, on my recent school disclosure, like, no documents have been presented, other than their garbage disclosure that they came up with. And me and brother Omar are reading every other Saturday, so I got, I got a lot of divides from brother Omar, from my hero, I think. So in the back of my mind, I already knew they were gonna do the garbage. You know what I mean? But through studying and, um, listening to that, through playing this, I was leaving some type of keys. But now I'm ready now, my brain is good, I'm picking up a letter key. So I already knew they were gonna do the garbage, but I just need to make sure everything was on the record. So the week, the week prior to the so-called lit trial, I knew they were gonna push the trial. So it didn't matter what I said about, um, them not having jurisdiction or whatever and whatnot, they were gonna push the trial. So me and Omar, we wanted to put like, come up with our own so-called case file, I was like, well, I'm gonna come up with a whole bunch of questions that I'm gonna get on the record, and get the justice of peace, the Crown, and the, um, policy enforcement to answer. That's gonna be on my transcript. Basically, you know, to, basically reveal the fraud of them realizing that I'm, I'm going to answer my questions. So the week before, it took me a couple days to come up with, uh, the, when you give your disclosures, basically showcasing all the so-called evidence they have on me, right? So I went, they have, uh, it's a synopsis, a general occurrence report, and then an overall disc, uh, disclosure that they combined together. So I went through each one, I went through the synopsis, like, fine tooth comb, went through the general occurrence, fine tooth comb, and obviously it's not four different people writing this, right?
Of course.
So there's inconsistencies everywhere. I'm talking everywhere. It's what I did, I came up with, it was like 47 questions in regards to inconsistencies. You know what I mean? And I started, so when it was, I went in there, I had five charges, so-called charges against my straw man. And I started like, you know, laying it down, like, ready to discover disclosure, Moorish American, um, um, public persona, security, everything, laying it on the record. Then I told the justice of peace, like, you know, "The Crown has jurisdiction." So then all of a sudden, the justice of peace looks at the Crown, he's like, "Listen, what's going on here?" What, he said, "What are you guys accusing me of?" And now the justice, now the Crown is fumbling with his words, like, ah, ah. Now it's fumbling, right? So now the Crown's like, I mean, the justice of peace is like, "Well, it's obvious that this gentleman is challenging my jurisdiction." "I only have jurisdiction to do with one matter here." So he's like, "What are you guys..." He's there telling the Crown, "He only has jurisdiction to do with one matter." So the Crown is like, "Well, I can only move forward with, um, obstructive justice." So then the, the justice of peace is like, "So what, you guys are gonna try the rest of the charges? You guys don't have any plan of those?" Now he's only, yeah, he's like, and now the justice of peace is stressing, so he says, "So you're just withdrawing them, not moving forward with those." He's like, "Oh, I'm just gonna move forward with justice of peace." And right off the bat,
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he said he's just moving forward with the obstructive.
Yeah, obstructive, so right off the bat, four charges, withdrawing. I'm talking no license, which they say you need a license. They withdrew that, putting indirect and saying that, "Obviously, we love to fraud." Because you guys have a, um, cook, why you guys know it draws? So we withdrew the no license, withdrew no insurance, obviously indirectly telling them what it is. And withdrew, um, obviously invalid sticker for the plate. Obviously indirectly letting us know what it is. And what's hilarious now is that so failure to identify is what gives the charge of obstructive justice.
Of course.
They withdrew failure to identify. So, so when you think about it, like, using your head now, then obviously there's nothing left. You know, then you're gonna move forward with something after removing the precursor that allows you to move forward. So they withdrew all those charges now. And now I'm sitting in a chair, and I'm like, thinking to myself, "What the hell is going on right now?" They removed all four charges, you can, I had, to make a long story short. Um, now he's kind of like, "Crazy, the justice of peace is like, you know, he's challenging my jurisdiction." Like, nobody understands what's going on, right? So I move forward, um, he then, the justice of peace tried to tell me like, "How charged are the word?" I'm like, "Hold on a second."
Jurisdiction, what do you know?
Jurisdiction, ooh! I'm like, "Jurisdiction needs to be addressed." He's like, "I'm satisfied."
What?
I'm like, "What do you mean you're satisfied?" He's like, "I'm satisfied that I have jurisdiction." I was like, "Well, you know, for the record, jurisdiction can't be, can't tell me about jurisdiction, jurisdiction must be proven." Like, I need delegation of authority. I need some form of proof that I can verify with my own hands, and let me know that this poor man has jurisdiction.
And he's like, "A guy in a robe."
Yeah. He's like, "I'm satisfied that I have jurisdiction." I'm like, "Listen." I'm not saying a lot, I'm like, "Listen, Eric, who are you telling me you have jurisdiction?" I'm like, "How can I answer you for jurisdiction?" And your response is, "I have jurisdiction." Offering no proof, but like I said, it isn't direct. He's letting you know, he has no jurisdiction. So I look at this, I'm like, "Okay, he did not need jurisdiction," because he's like, he just, he's like, "Tell me he has jurisdiction." And I'm telling him, "You have to prove jurisdiction." I'm gonna speed it up a bit. So anyway, he moves forward now, and like, "Oh, I'm gonna enter a plea for you, you know, into a plea." They asked him how to apply, and I'm like, "Well, obviously, I can't enter a law of plea until jurisdiction has been answered." I'm like, "If jurisdiction hasn't been answered, I can't enter, I can't enter a law of plea." Enters a plea for my straw man. So now the prosecutor goes through this question.
Well, what was the plea that he entered?
Guilty. I mean, not guilty, not guilty.
Which is interesting in itself.
Why would you just enter guilty?
Why are you telling me it's not guilty, man? You have, you now have the opportunity to enter a plea for me, and you say not guilty. But I mean, it's not me.
That's huge.
So now, um, the Crown Prosecutor asks his questions to the policy enforcement, and now it's my turn. And I mean, so like, now I'm playing the role, like, because I'm like, I just wanna go to these guys, you know, so they can ask some questions. I got a transcript that I was coming, so you guys can, uh, go through the transcript, because there's a lot of jewels in there, man. Because they got golden, and then didn't realize, until it was too late. So the, um, justice of the peace, acting as judge, he's like, "You have a few questions." I'm like, "Well, they asked, man, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta a few questions." So now I go to the, uh, little stand, and I just like, find this policy enforcement. Good questions, man. First and foremost, I got from you, was he wearing his hat?
Yeah.
So before I even got into that, because I said I gotta go with him. So I gotta leave a trap, and then I walk into it. So I asked him, first question I asked him was, um,
What makes a uniform worth something?
No, first question I asked him was, um, if we had a contract, me and him were contracted to do this type of business. Obviously, he said no. Then I go to show more questions, and I asked, "Wear your full uniform that day?" He said, "Yes." I was like, "Okay, would you wear your hat?" He said, "No." I'm like, "So what's considered a full uniform?" I'm like, "Is wearing a hat considered a full uniform?" He's like, "Now, this little thing took a rabbit." To make a short, I'm gonna find out on the record that you gotta wear a hat, get a full uniform. Because they don't let you wear, right? Because in the vehicle, they can't wear the hat because it's all Yeah, that's what he said, but at the end of the day, he said on the record, "It's considered a full uniform." Like, I have my hat, I don't have my hat, I'm not a full uniform. So anyways, I got, I went through a lot of questions, a lot, a lot, a lot of questions. And then, um, I started getting into some deeper stuff. And now the justice of the peace, like, just like 25 questions in, he's like, "Yo, what the hell is going on?" And he's like, "Yo, this guy's not playing." Now I'm asking the policy enforcement questions, and the justice of the peace is the one that's answering them. Because I asked the policy enforcement question, and he stopped. The justice of the peace is like, "Well, basically, what he asked me, this, that, and the third." Then it went deeper than that, then he's just, the justice of the peace is like, "Tell me, you don't have to answer." You don't have to answer. At the end of it, um, we did gather a little bit, a little bit of a break. Now, like, yo, like, just, and before that, they kicked all the policy enforcement off the roof. So at that time, with me, two other Moors, a whole room full of policy enforcement. And it's just like, the Crown prosecutor got like, "Yo, seen something happen," and he's like, "Yo, ask the justice of the peace to get rid of all the policy enforcement, so that we have everyone." Room is empty now, which is me, the policy enforcement, justice of the peace, Crown, clerks, and, uh, policy enforcement. So after I, I read through the questions, um, I read through the questions, now they had a little break, they come back, and they want to select, then what they do, like, enter their submissions, basically why he shouldn't find, um, find the straw man guilty, because I wouldn't listen to my special appearance. Saying why I have to try to force me to come out of my nationality, I said, "No, this is why I have a special appearance, so we're here dealing with, not letting go of the straw man." Anyway, it was on the same straw man, and it's basically the name that they, they
The all-caps name of the tribe.
Which is the university, right? So I'm telling them, "Listen, I'm here as a special appearance, I'm making this clear, like, every, every now and then, I'm like, on the record, I'm speaking a little loud, Moorish American." And then he's like, he's telling me, "You don't have to say on the record." I'm like, "Listen."
Just like
I'm like, "Listen, to, to happen." And then he's like, then he goes over, he's like, "Yeah, it's a good happen, it's a bad happen." It's like, "It's a good happen." And I was like, "Yeah, bro, I can't help myself." So anyway, um, so now I come back to enter the submissions, and I'm like, "Well, I asked him if he has a bond number, this was crucial." I asked, "Bonds, do you have a bond number? If so, what is it?" The policy enforcement looks at me like, "Bond number." "Are you bonded with?" He's like, "I don't have a bond number." I'm like, "You positive?" And then I said, "Okay." So you, you have a bond number, like, something in form of insurance or something that, like, in case you do something and you get sued, doesn't anybody buy? He's like, "I don't have a bond." I was like, "You don't have a bond number." That'd be interesting. So when it comes back to ending the so-called submission, I'm like, "Well, policy enforcement's claiming that he does not have a bond, bond number, which means he cannot be a corporate agent, work for the police. It's impossible. He has to have a bond." I'm like, "So..." You know, he's got this, you know what I mean? So anyway, we go back and forth now, and now he's coming to a time where he's, uh, about to enter his, um,
His ruling.
His ruling, whatever, which is completely fragile.
Yeah.
Because it's already been stated that they removed the precursor for the obstruct, so whatever ruling you make is essential. So now the prosecutor, so the, so he goes by his, "Oh, we find, um, straw man guilty of, um, obstructive justice." After me saying, like, first and foremost, like, "You don't have a bond number." He couldn't have been a police officer, did nothing to the straw. This, that, and the other, he wasn't even in full uniform. He did not fully identify himself, he wasn't in full uniform. You can't assume that he's a policy enforcement. Because policy enforcement, you can buy the uniform online. You know what I mean? So you can't assume this. So anyway, he's making this move, so he asks the Crown, he's like, "So what is your, um, submission for, uh, for sentencing?" So now, the Crown, the Crown, he's like, "Oh, what, think you're dating jail?" Right? And I'm like, I'm like, "Where's the next, it's not, you gotta push, I'm gonna go grab the, uh, straw man's license, and he's like, "There you go, jail." But, um, the, uh, the justice of the peace, now, he's just starting to drop some Jews. I can't remember all of them, they're getting transfers. And brother Randy recorded the back and forth. So we have it on, on, on audio too. I can't remember a lot of Jews who's mentioning, but then he says, he says, the, the justice of the peace looks at him like, "Jail." He's like, "What are you talking about?" He's like, "Jail for what?" Then obviously, he's trying to make like, "Oh, obviously, because they went through my really discouraging, my table, right?" They're like, "Oh, obviously, I didn't even care about Canada, this, that, and the other, he's a Randy." They forgive him a fine, he's not gonna pay, he's very, very likely, and then the justice of the peace is all right. He's like, "Well, the only way you wanna know if he's gonna pay is fine." He's like, "Forgive my fine." He's like, "You can't assume that he's not going to pay." And I'm like, "That's gotta be, yeah, it's happening." So then, um, go through, I'm thinking like, obstructive justice, they, these guys are gonna give you like a thousand dollar fine, two thousand dollar fine, something to, something to deter you. That's what the Crown was saying, like, "You need to deter him, because obviously he's a radical." And we need to deter him. And the justice of the peace is like, "So you worked."
She's like, "I remember I told you this, man."
Yeah, yeah, "So you worked." He's like, "Okay, one hundred dollar fine." That's what, that's what they, they left me against the straw man. I'm talking for like five months, a couple days in jail, it's nonsense. And at the end of it, they give you a hundred, they give the straw man a hundred dollar fine. But then he's telling you the whole time, he's like, "If you don't like the ruling, you can always appeal." He's telling you this the whole time. "If you don't like the ruling, you can always appeal." But what happens is, when they eliminated, like I said, the, the first four charges, they put it in the default, because I couldn't have obstructed. If you eliminated the charge, it would have caused me to extract. So in the eyes of these people that were in there, it looked, like brother Omar said, they gotta put something down on them, but they can't have a ruling where, um, a Moor came in there and
Stratus, the status beaker.
The status beaker, so what they had to do is, they had to cover their bases, so they can say, "Oh, you got found guilty." But on the back end, I'm like, "Well, when I laid them in that paperwork that says what was the precursor for the obstruct, and they say failure to identify, and then I shook them, the failure to identify was dropped from the Crown, which means there's, there's no, there's no validity in it. The difference in that charge, you can't, that in itself, that ruling in itself is going to also be the same." And what happens is, it gets, everything gets stuck in the rug, everything goes up the door quietly. But in the public side, it was like, "Oh, oh, he got found guilty," but in actuality, it went deeper to him. He started picking up keys, and he basically like, kind of like, oh, kind of like removed himself from it, did what he had to do. But though, the door opened for me to come and finish down the back end, when there's no one watching.
And through the, and through the prosecutor under the bus.
Yeah, oh my God.
He has to.
Wait till you see the transcript. Under the bus, he buried his head. Buried it.
Because technically, the justice of the peace, that argument between them, he's basically saying to the Crown, "How did you get me into this position?"
That's exactly, uh-huh.
He's saying, "Why did you hook me into this position, now you have to get me out of it."
Because the first thing he asked, like, it was, obviously, this, this, this gentleman's charged with jurisdiction. And he's looking at the Crown like, "Yo, how did you get me?" Y'all should have brought us all up here. So, yeah, that's why, uh, that's a lot.
And, uh, yeah, so this close up, so just to touch on that real quick is, uh, it made me think of a quote, uh, one of the same that Dr. Ali said, he said, "Don't, don't bring your issues into their court." So put your, put your, put your nationality on the record, right? And these two things are contradictory. So he put a nationality on the record, but he didn't get stuck on it, and he didn't use that as his defense. Right? He got into, okay, you must have here, you must have there. And not even per se as, okay, if I go through and assume they messed up for the sake, you know? But as practice. So, when you have that mindset, that's the best, to me, that's the best mindset that I have. Okay, first thing, first, uh, what do they call that? Uh, first appearances to the first, uh, impressions, first impressions of everything, right? Your first, their first impression is, yeah, Moers American, put on the record, for the record, say it a few times. But then, at the same time, you had his paperwork, which was done beforehand. Um, all their mistakes, and all, all, all what's wrong with it, even from a legal perspective, and, okay, here, this is, you messed up here. But even just common sense, right? This, you know, you can't have this charge, you have that charge, you made a mistake here, spelt a mistake there.
That's another thing.
All that, what it is, right? Because those are their issues. That's what Goli was putting forward to us, like, just correct.
And that's crucial, that's crucial part I forgot to mention. The, when they, when they're doing the little case, it says RV, or R, which stands for Regina. But you ask, "Who the hell is Regina?" R versus straw man, right? Now, they spell my straw man incorrectly. So, it said R versus Bloomfield, when the last time when the straw man said Bloomfield. So, my first question to the Policy Enforcer, I was like, "Listen, so, R versus Bloomfield?" And I asked him, he said, "Yes." I'm like, "What is R's name for this in China?" "Come on, yeah, okay." I'm like, "So, who's Bloomfield?" You know what I mean? But I didn't give it up, that is incorrect. I'm like, "So, who's Bloomfield?" And y'all was trying to point at me. And I was like, you know, I, I, I should have said the ledge. I'm like, "Bloomfield?" So, what I did is, like, I said, I laid it down, I laid it down, I'm like, I'm gonna walk into it, pointing at me as Bloomfield. And then I was like, "That's interesting, because the..." And so, that was, that was the synopsis, where it's R versus Bloomfield, and then all the evidence had the actual correct spelling. So, I was like, "So, who's Bloomfield?" Then he's like, points me again, I'm like, "Hold on a second, wait." RV versus Bloomfield.
And Bloomfield.
And then Bloomfield, and I'm like, "So, I'm like, which one is it?" He's like, "Well, Bloomfield." And then, how I laid it into that charge, I asked him, "Who wrote the report?" I'm like, "Did you personally write the report?" He said, "Yes, come to find out, you guys can see the transcript that they sent into a typist."
Yes.
So, they so-called write the report, or basically submit their notes, and a typist just types it up. Now, like I said, some things are, right, some things are in there. I'm looking at Bloomfield spelling mistake, off the bat, I told him, I gave him the spelling to go out. So, I told the J P, I was like, "That prosecution got picked in Bloomfield, because this RV versus Bloomfield." I'm like, "It's not even basically that, but Bloomfield." "Bloomfield," and you tell, I thought they would do this now, and it's RV versus Bloomfield. You know what I mean? But, yeah, you're right. And then they tried to chop it down, like, "Oh, it's typo," I'm like, "No, everything in the box is exact." And once it gets back, it was just huge as that.
I told, I told Adam Solas, um, the phonetics of the word that spelled it.
Yeah, but that, that's like, that, that's not even Adam Solas, because they just spelled it completely wrong. Yeah.
So, even, even by their understanding, it's wrong.
That's right.
Even by their understanding, they're telling the body it's wrong.
And that's what I was saying, it's like, I took it from the Moers perspective, putting everything on the record. But what I've seen that some people might have gotten in trouble with is that they took it from the Moers perspective side, and then they stood on it alone. So, when they're gonna keep doing their, their tirade, they're gonna keep doing their, their nonsense. But if you just say, "Oh, I'm a Moers American, I can't deal with this," then they're gonna go through behind closed doors and not give a... They're gonna do the front, you're gonna continue on, and then you're gonna del aside like Boston. So, I was like, "I know they're going that way, from talking to Brother Omar. I already knew they were going that way, something like that. I'm gonna stand on my Moers American principle, but then I'm gonna vote it, I'm gonna claim the little, the little thing, so I can get some, uh, stuff on the record. I can get some stuff on the record, I'd like to review, and look over what we could have."
Because... Not that they clear to you that ultimately, because it's fraud from the get-go, they're gonna run out of, anything that they're gonna start saying is gonna be fraudulent back. Because there's no standing to begin with, right? Because the contract is never there. It's, it's, it's crazy, like, it's all, it's, it's a facade, it's illusion. It's illusion from the get-go to the end, so whether you're standing at the front, trying to say, get, get, uh, stop, they're not gonna do that. But once you get into the body of it, it's time to have some fun.
And then the J P to say, "Okay, well, yeah, prosecute the Crown, you know, just, why this, why that, why that," right? And then, that, that kind of brings the, the J P on your side, is that...
Well, what happened when they two, it doesn't, like, the J P still, they're still boys.
And it's, but I mean, in, in, in sort of proceedings, though.
And then, that's what it looked like, it looked like the Justice of Peace was supremely upset with the Crown. Because every time the Crown would say something, the J P would be like, "Why, or, I'm just sitting there, or,